All right, welcome to the zoning board of appeals. Please silence all cell phones and note that this meeting may be taped by FCTV. If there's any private party recording this hearing, please step up to the podium to request permission. I'll introduce the board and staff. On my far right is Mark Fineran, a voting member. To my closest right is Scott Peterson, a member. My name is Suzanne Murphy, Chair. To my left is Tony Petucci, associate and on the left, full voting member tonight. And on his left is Nick Haney, full voting member tonight. And then we have Noreen Stockman, our zoning administrator, and Ashley DeMello, office assistant. The zoning board of appeals is charged with applying the state zoning statutes as well as the town zoning bylaws and reviewing and voting on every application. All decisions are made through the public hearing process. Our goal is to hear testimony from the applicants and the public and to allow a full and fair discussion of the project prior to closing the hearing process and reaching a decision. Number one, to begin each hearing, the clerk will read the public announcement for the hearing and read pertinent information from the file. Two, the applicant or the applicant's representative will then have 15 minutes to make a presentation, but the time may be extended by a vote of the board. Three, the board will then question the applicant. Four, the public will then be invited to comment. Comments should be limited to two minutes and be strictly related to the proposal. All members of the public wishing to speak should wait to be recognized by the Chair and should come to the podium. Please state your name and address for the record. Please speak into the mic. It will not amplify your voice and record audio for FCTV viewers. And we also have a moment now before we start. If anyone wants to make public comment on anything that's not on the agenda, you're welcome to come up and make a comment. All right, for anybody that has a, what do you call it, an agenda in front of us, we're gonna, there's a continuation, so we're gonna get that done first. It's James J. Smith and Lauma Serlins, 51 Thomas Lane, Falmouth, Mass. Applied to the zoning board of appeals, special permit pursuant to section 240-10-2A and 240-11-3A4, Dakota Falmouth, to raise and rebuild the existing non-conforming dwelling. Subject property is 51 Thomas Lane, and they have requested a continuation. So I will need a motion.
So moved. Second.
We have a motion and a second. We have a date?
May 15.
May 15. So we'll add that on to the motion. That will be on May 15th. So we have a motion and a second. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed, none. And then we'll take up a continuation, 40 Silver Beach Ave, Papagno.
Papagno.
Thank you, I'm sorry.
Okay.
I apologize. And this has been opened?
Yes.
And are you, you the applicant?
Yes, my name is Denise Papagno. I actually represent my mother, I'm the trustee. My mother is going to be 83 years old, and we're building this house for her next to my house, so I can care for her in her older ages.
That's great.
The attorney, John Pallone, could not make it today. He had an emergency at the last minute. So would like to continue and hopefully we'll be able to answer all your questions. And David Martin's here, also the engineer, in case there's any technical questions.
You sure you don't want to try to do it yourself?
Yeah, we would like to.
Oh, I thought you said you wanted to continue. You want to continue up there.
No, I wanted to continue to, sorry.
All right, so take-
Oh, please, let's do it.
So tell us what you're trying to do.
So, we are, I think you have a letter there from the attorney? And it, we're trying to, we need to extend, sorry, I don't have my, we want to put a two-story home there.
Okay.
And it's a non-conforming lot, so although we are making some, some of the lot requirements better, it's still gonna be non-conforming. And we'll be only increasing lot coverage from 80 square, 80 square feet.
It looks to me like the proposed is gonna be less. Is that correct? The proposed structure coverage?
No, 24.6, up from 23.1.
But we'll be taking down and go-
But wasn't the driveway and everything 37, and now it's 33? Is that, or-
Oh, yeah, that's-
Yep, yeah, so that's total.
Right.
That's total.
Total, right. The height is 28.8, right?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Removing garage. Increasing the backyard setback, so that's good.
Replacing a much-needed-
Upgrade.
Upgrade, good way of putting it, yeah. No, I went out and looked at this, this looks like a good project to me. Any questions from up here? Nick, do you have any questions?
No, I mean, half that street's being rebuilt right now.
That's so true. You could see it when you drove up there. Yep. You have any questions?
I do. I think it's a wonderful addition to the, a street, but I do have some questions and I'm concerned about, recently I was reminded that our findings have to be very, very clear, so I'm going to ask a few questions and see if those findings, for whatever decided here, are clear. One of the things that this board is required to do under 240-10-2, paragraph 3A, it refers to 240-12.1E as part of the review standards, and part of that review standard says that we're supposed to look at the adequacy of method of sewer disposal, source of water and drainage. Your plans don't show anything but a Title V septic. Is there any reason why? You're in a coastal pond overlay district, MASTEP file, has a map that says you're in the nitrogen-sensitive zone, and frankly, you're supposed to have an IA system if you're in that nitrogen-sensitive zone. So my question to you is, are you going to be putting in a innovative alternative septic system to reduce the nitrogen load? Because part of the concern is, it says here, let me just find where it does say that, under 240-12.1E, let me go back to that, and I want to read it to be careful. Shall grant a special permit only upon its written determination that the proposed use will not have adverse effects that overbalance its beneficial effects on either the neighborhood or the town. We have a very serious nitrogen load issue, you're in the coastal pond overlay district, and you're in the MASTEP nitrogen-sensitive area. This will, given what the town is going through, to maintain its orders from the state of Massachusetts, to not add any more nitrogen to its abeyments, and I realize this is just one house, but we have to look at the totality of everything that's being approved these days. And I think that simplicity would be that you put an IA system in so that you do not have any adverse effect on the town.
So the number of bedrooms is staying the same?
I realize that.
And I'm not a septic guy, but if that's what the rules out of the law is, I would imagine that's what it'd be.
What I'm doing is, I'm trying to make an assessment based on the bylaws only. I don't, I'm not a attorney, I'm not a, an engineer. It just says that we have to consider what the effects will be on the neighborhood or the town, and part of that is, in sub-paragraph E, the adequacy of method sewer disposal. The town is, is trying to manage that under MASTEP. It's difficult, and every, and you're in the nitrogen-sensitive area according to MASTEP as well as the coastal pond overlay district of this town. By putting in an IA system now, which likely is gonna happen anyway once the town gets its new bylaws together, is gonna help save this community from additional nitrogen in the, in the coastal pond overlay district. And again, it's just part of our review process, and we have to make that determination as best we can.
So I, I think I might be able to help with this, in that we have a referral from the board of health, and what they're saying is that the existing dwelling has three bedrooms, and because they're staying at three, they're not increasing the nitrogen that they're currently creating. So, so their policy is that people provide for an IA, and that when the board of health has a policy in place that requires it, they will require it. So this applicant has provided space for an IA, but I would advocate that it would be the board of health that would be making that determination.
And I, and I agree with our zoning administrator. The board of health's responsibility is to review any IA system proposed that comply with MASTEP 310 CMR 15. That's what they do. This board is required to look through the review standards, and one of those review standards is whether or not you're going to adversely affect the town.
I think.
Now, on the one hand, we have the board of health saying that because they don't have all of their new regs in, that you can have a standard Title V. This board has to ma, and it's just me, and I'm just one person. The rest of the board has to decide what they want to do. I'm simply wanting, for the record, that I'm asking you to consider putting in an IA system now. Evidently, you've got it in the plans as an add-on later, and it's probably gonna be less expensive just to do it now.
And again, like I said, I mean, without speaking to an engineer, I have no idea of what the cost would be, what the effort would be, and all that stuff, so it's difficult for me to comment on it, but we came here today, and I appreciate your comments, we just came here today with the understanding that we were, have a plan for what's required right now, but I hear what you're saying, and the fact that he put an add-on for it, I guess he's addressing it in some way too, so.
Yeah. Go ahead, Mark.
Your engineer is here?
Mm-hmm.
That would be you, sir? It appears here that you have six feet, seven inches between the tank and, and the leaching field. Is, is that adequate to install a D-Nite system between?
For the record, David Martin. Good evening.
Evening.
If you look to the right of the septic tank, you'll see a rectangle, and in that rectangle, it says provide eight-inch drop. That is the reserve area that the board of health requires us to set aside for the future.
Okay, so it goes laterally.
Yeah.
Can you just show it up there? I can't see it.
It says pro-
I have to-
Where it says RS and-
But I'll do my-
I see it, I do see it.
Eight-inch drop, that box. It's not noted, but it's obviously enough.
That's a reserves, I'm sorry, Mark.
Yeah, the, see the box where it says provide eight-inch drop?
I do see it.
Inside that box is the, is the required area. And I, I thought it was six feet was, but it actually looks more, but obviously, he's an engineer, and they provided it, and Scott said it was good.
It's a point, usually it says reserve area. Here, it's not called out.
It's not called out.
No.
Again, I'm bringing it up, it's part of our review process under 240, and I would like the board to consider conditioning your approval to include the IA system now. I am one member only, and it's up to the rest of the board whether they want to vote that.
Personally, until it's mandated, I'm kind of adverse, because when it does get mandated, if the house is completed, they're gonna be eligible, and it's a retired older woman, they're gonna be eligible for funds from Barnstable County and from the state, and it would significantly soften the blow as opposed to us.
And we know this for a fact?
Well, it's common for a fact. I mean, that neighborhood's already been sewed, just south of where they are already. The whole neighborhood has a limit of three bedrooms if you're on the sewer.
Well, I'm gonna be consistent and ask for that and another two that's on the docket tonight, so I guess we can have the same conversation two more times.
Yeah. And I mean, I understand what you're, but I, my answer would be the same, I'm, until it's fully mandated by the DEP, I'm, I'm adverse to shoulder-
Oh, it's mandated by DEP, it's not mandated by the town right now.
Well, technically, it's-
They're waiting on DEP.
They're waiting on the DEP. It's coming, but I mean, I, again, I'm just adverse to shoulder anybody with any more expense than necessary, and then, as I said again, once the house is completed, they'd be in a much better financial position. I, I think that's how it works, to, to get a little help. I mean, the woman is 83 years old. She could be richer than you though, so.
You never know.
Nick, do you have any comment on it?
I do not.
Scott?
Well, it was difficult. I'm looking at the same set of plans, and again, usually, historically, it's called out that there's a, a reserve area for the IA system. It was a little more difficult here. I agree with Tony. We are in the water resource protection overlay, we wish that you do the IA, but timing right now is, hasn't been promulgated, but we always hope and wish that applicants would think about the future. You're basically tearing down a project and starting all over, but I guess the horse has already been beaten, but it's, it's well-needed. I'm glad your mom will be nearby you, and I don't have any further questions.
And just one more, I mean, you have to consider that this property is upgraded to a Title V from what I assume was a honeycomb, which, it's a significant improvement overall, and everything south of that has been sewed. I think the sewer starts only a few houses down.
May I ask the engineer a question?
Several.
Oh, several.
Yeah.
Will this new Title V reduce the nitrogen load to 10 milligrams per liter per day or less?
I don't have the answer. The, I've been keeping close track of the board of health regulations. They're in various iterations of what they want to bring for public comment and board for a vote. The current iteration speaks to increases in flow, with it a coastal pond overlay district. So, given where we stand with them today, I believe we would comply.
So can you tell us the difference between the current flow and what the new system's flow would be?
One and the same.
Be exactly the same?
Correct.
But you're not sure if it'd be 10 milligrams per liter per day or less?
I'm not gonna, I've come here on very short notice, I'm not prepared to answer that question for you.
Well, you could say that a title, properly licensed Title V system is gonna produce less nitrogen than the honeycomb that exists there now.
Absolutely.
Without a doubt.
Without a doubt.
But it's probably doing something in the neighborhood of 30 or more.
Right, I'm, I'm just not prone to guessing numbers, but I concur completely with you on that.
Yeah, I agree.
Well, I think you're, I think you're lucking out here with the board tonight, and I will bring this up with the next two.
Do you have any other question?
Thank you.
Anybody else have any other questions up here before we go to the public? Guys, good?
I'm, I'm good, as long as-
Anybody from the public want to comment on this project? I think it's a great project myself. All right.
Motion to close.
We have a motion to close, all second? We have a motion to close in a second? Any further discussion?
No.
You guys all set?
Mm-hmm.
All those in favor? Aye. Opposed, none? So we're, oh, you're not closing?
You have, you have a mandate.
Full one, we have a-
No, no, this is to close. This is not to close.
Wait, you don't want to close? All right, so it's a five-zero on the close, and now I need a motion.
Motion to approve with conditions. Second, then?
We have a motion and a second. Shall we do findings?
Aye.
Okay, all right, we'll do findings. All right, it's in an RC district, Silver Beach overlay, no flood zone, the lot size is 51-59, it's on a public road. I have existing as 23.1 over 37.1, and proposed is 24.6 over 33.8. That's the structures in the buildings.
Yeah.
The height is 28.8, it's a three-bedroom. There is a comp sheet that was submitted late today. The garage is being removed. There'll be an increase in backyard setback. Any other findings anybody else can come up with? Let's find that list that you gave me. We heard from conservation, no comment, planning, no comment, fire, no comment, assessor, no comment. Water was an upgrade.
No abudders.
No abudders, no letters?
No.
I think that's it.
They're removing their existing garage.
Yeah. Yeah. Did I say that one? I thought I did.
The lot and the street frontage are both non-conforming.
Excuse me?
The lot and the street frontage are both non-conforming, they're both undersized. Existing three-bedrooms staying as a three-bedroom.
And we did have a letter from health telling us that they are making space.
Right.
For an IA.
And a water upgrade, and that's the only, and engineering. I should read engineering though, that's probably a good one to read, because that's important.
That's what RS stands for, Reserve Space.
Yeah.
Learning-
Okay, this is from engineering. This application was reviewed for impacts on public rights away and public utilities. Silver Beach Ave is a public right-of-way in this area. No alterations are proposed to the right-of-way. Any changes to the driveway or work within the right-of-way will require filing a permit with the engineering division. Two, any connections or alterations to public utilities require permission from the appropriate town department. Three, the project must not direct any stormwater runoff to public property, abudders or public rights-of-way. Four, drywells are shown for infiltration of stormwater runoff, as we typically recommend. Five, we recommend the following condition be included. Upon completion of construction, the applicant shall post the address for this residence per, for compliance. Six, erosion controls are shown on the, on the plan and appear to be mostly adequate to protect, to protect abutting properties on the public right-of-way. We recommend that, that construction entrance be required to prevent sediment tracking into Silver Beach Ave. And we also recommend the following condition, quotations, "Construction on this project shall follow the town's soil erosion and sediment control standard conditions." Document can be found in the engineering division's page of the town's website. References to the town, to the Department of Public Works Engineering Division shall be replaced with the zoning board of appeals, who will be the permitting authority. I think that's all we have for findings.
Madam Chair, I don't know if you wanted to make a note that we are improving the, the right-side lock-
Setback.
Setback, and also the front setback.
That's kind of procedural, we're not supposed to talk once it's closed, but that can be kind of procedural. It's another finding, I did leave it out, so, thank you. All right, so conditions.
Per plans.
Per plans.
Workouts.
All town boards. Where's that sheet we need?
Where is that sheet?
Where is that sheet? Here it is. All departments. I don't think we'll need police for this. Do you think they'll need to consult police for this? I don't think so.
I mean, we usually have a standard condition that says that, you know-
If needed.
Work vehicles will be in the street, et cetera, and that if you have an issue, we just, you know, have you contact the police department for detail if it should arou, need should arise, so.
And-
Standardly have that.
No other structures on the property? Anybody think of anything else?
No.
So I would also say that we perhaps add no bedroom created in the basement. I noticed that you guys are installing a escape well, which is great, provides you with another means of being rested in the basement. We just want to make sure that bedrooms don't extend beyond, right?
Creep in.
So you don't be that, or, you know, like the craft room, you can use it as any type of room except a bedroom.
Right.
And there are four-foot opening on that?
Yeah, same with the second-floor loft, they won't allow you to create privacy there. We would also certify the lot for coverage, so your surveyor will do that for you, just to make sure that you don't exceed the lot coverage that you're granted. And post the address, right? So that everybody can find you, or your mom, and I think we're good.
Yeah, everybody's all set up here for conditions?
Absolutely.
Got your cheat sheet, you're good? All right, all those in favor of this project?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? We're all set?
Thank you very much.
Looks like a good project, good luck.
Thank you.
All right, next we move on to Goldstein, 73 Alcott Road, East Falmouth, requesting a special permit to convert the existing garage into habitable space, construct a new garage, addition and covered front porch exceeding 20% lot coverage by structures. And this was also opened.
And staked.
And staked, yeah.
I got something else.
Draw votes home this time. Good evening, members of the board. My name's Joshua Kergennis, I'm representing Ms. Goldstein for this project.
Just give us an overview of-
Oh, you want me to continue? I didn't know if you had to make an announcement first.
Yeah, well, last time, we just like quickly opened it, but we didn't get like an overview of the project.
Yeah.
Thank you, I shouldn't have mentioned that.
Sorry about that. So tonight, we're requesting a variance to lot coverage to 21.93%.
A special permit.
Special permit, excuse me, in order to remodel the existing structure. The remodel includes a 13 and a half foot by 22.3 foot addition for a new garage, and a 24 and a half by 17 foot addition for a primary bedroom. It also includes, in addition to the kitchen, a 13 by 13 feet. We received referrals to increase the water supply from 3/4 to 1 inch, which we're happy to comply with, and a referral from engineering regarding the fence, which we spoke briefly about last time, and we're also happy to comply with. And I did add the averages to the lot coverage worksheet, which was requested last time I was here.
The comp sheet part, yeah.
Yes, ma'am.
You're all set? Any questions from up here?
I have a comment, and we never broached this or whatever, but most usual, and this is for Warwick and Associates and anybody else who comes before us, most usually, there are pictures or drawings of existing, and then, of course, proposed. And, and I find that sometimes quite helpful. When I'm walking around the property, I will put a finger on the existing and a finger on the proposed, so I can look at the two and compare in relation to what we have. These drawings do not have the existing, and it was kind of difficult, I mean-
There's only, is that one there kind of?
Yeah, that's, you know, most have, at the very least, pictures. And I mean, with this house, it was particularly difficult, because, God, there's 1,400 corners in this place, you know? It is, it is spread out, it's much larger than it looks, I mean, and we never, that never came up in our criteria for application or whatever, but it certainly makes my job easier, and, and in this particular house, as, you know, sprawling as it is, I don't know, it's just something we're gonna have to review next time we have our biannual meeting, because, like I said, 95% of the plans-
They did do-
Have existing on there, and this one does not. But other than that, it was staked out fine. It's a nice close, nice, nice project, kind of a heck of a nice house, and that's all I have to add.
Three bedrooms?
Yes, three bedrooms, sir.
Okay. Ridge height, I guess, speaking of Mark's point, do you know what that is off the-
Yeah, it's called out in page A3.
I'm there, but I guess-
I had 20.6 myself.
20 feet, six and something, or?
Yeah, 20 foot, six inches.
20 feet, six inches, okay.
And what is the current septic setup there?
It was relocated to the rear left corner of the house.
I'm looking for the plan here.
It's set up for a three-bedroom. We pulled the paperwork from the Department of Health. We pulled the paperwork from the Department of Health.
And as you heard in the last applicant's, you're in a water resource protection overlay.
Mm-hmm.
And there's no change there to help on the protection side, I take it?
No, without the increase in bedrooms, same kind of situation. We'd, you know, without the requirement from the Department of Health, we didn't intend on that. As I'm representing a client also, I couldn't really speak to if we'd be willing to do it. I will definitely bring it up to them, but obviously, there's a cost associated with that, so it's something I would have to get approved, as I'm representing a customer.
Could you take us through what's happening with the fence that went out to Shore Street?
So, I received a referral from engineering. I didn't receive what the, what the remedy is, but we are happy to comply with whatever is necessary in order to keep this project going. But I believe that it's not, I believe that it's, it's non-conforming, because it might not be on their property.
Yes, you're, you've kind of aggregated a fair amount of.
Yeah.
Property.
I know the fence was pre-existing, their ownership of the, of the home. There was also a shed that was non-conforming, that we were required to take down, and we did.
The corner, yeah.
Yeah, we took that shed down.
Okay.
We were asked to, and, and we demolished it, so, like I said, we're happy to comply with whatever is necessary to make this project go forward. I just didn't get the specific remedy for that issue.
You didn't have one in here.
Nor did you. You know what?
Sure. So, if you have a fence or any other structure in the road layout.
Mm-hmm.
The, you have two options. You can either remove, or you can apply for a license with the select board.
Okay.
So, what we would do is condition in the decision that you essentially pick.
Yeah.
And that prior to the final sign-off by the billing department, you have to have done one of the two.
Okay.
So, it's something that you can look into.
I know with the first issue, we, we went towards demolition, so, you know, once I can talk to my customer about it, we'll see if they want to rebuild the fence, or try to apply for that.
Okay, thank you for the help.
Absolutely.
Questions?
Yes. I don't want to waste this board's time, or your time, on IA systems, but I have to ask, do we have a, anything for the Board of Health on this one?
Yeah.
I would not find it online.
That's in here.
So, I think we had an email from them.
Yeah.
And again, I, I guess here's the problem, is typically, when we send these referrals out, and we get them back, we forward them to the applicants. So, I think the problem, speaking for the applicants tonight, is where the Board of Health has not issued a referral saying that they're requesting or requiring an IA.
There's no comment.
The applicants are not preparing for that. So, when the board's asking people tonight, and it's a substantial investment, you know, it's not like changing the color of some paint, right? That people are not prepared to address it, because it's.
Well, we have a problem in this town, and this is a way of solving it. I'm sorry that we are not prepared to work on that tonight, and I don't want to waste your time. I think, otherwise, it's a wonderful design.
Thank you.
A very nice improvement to the neighborhood.
Thank you.
The, the system in now, the Title V, you guys are installing, or it was already installed?
It was already.
Yeah, it moved.
It was already installed.
Is that, do you think, I didn't see it, does that allow for an upgrade?
I don't even see it on here either.
There's, there's no space that allows for an upgrade. All that shows on this plan is the location of the existing.
Oh, there it is.
Okay.
Pretty big house for a three-bedroom system. Just have to say, in Tony's defense.
It does look like there's a lot of room around it. Just saying.
Well, that's, I guess.
It's not prescribed in the plan, but I think there's space there.
Yeah. Okay.
Some people are putting in some of the piping now, ahead of time, just to.
I'm, I'm definitely gonna recommend it. I appreciate the, I appreciate the, you know, upgrading to the IA systems to reduce nitrogen in those areas, it's just, I have a customer I have to deal with, so.
I have, I, I understand exactly what you're saying. It's about the community, and how we preserve our waterways.
Yeah, yeah, no, I absolutely appreciate, appreciate that.
I think that if there wasn't ample space, Scott certainly would have made note.
Yeah, there's plenty of space there, it looks to me.
Well, let me get one more thing on the, if I may.
Certainly.
I want to get one more thing on the findings. Is it your opinion that there, that this project has no adverse effect in the town with regard to additional nitrogen load?
I honestly don't, I don't think I have the qualifications to even speak on nitrogen load.
So, then the answer would have to be, you're not sure, you just don't know.
Yeah.
It could, it might, it might not.
Yeah, I honestly would be incapable of answering the question.
I just want that in the findings, because that's part of what we're supposed to be doing.
Yeah.
And.
I wish that, I wish I knew the answer. As soon as this concludes, I'm actually, I'm gonna, you know, we'll try to find some information.
I hope you do.
Yeah, no, I'm being genuine. I appreciate the, I appreciate what you're saying.
You all set? Mark, you good?
Yeah, I'm good.
Everybody up here is okay? Anybody from the public want to speak on this project? You have anything further?
No, that's it. Thank you.
All right. Noreen, do you have anything further?
Motion to close.
Second.
We have a motion to close in a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye, opposed, none? All right, let's do some findings. We need the motion first, yes.
Motion to approve with conditions.
Second.
Now we'll do findings. All right, we're in an RB zone, green pond overlay, not in a flood zone. Lot size is twelve-six-eighty. The bylaw is two forty ten-two-A and two forty eleven-three-A-four. It's on a private road. Existing is seventeen, and full structure is twenty, and paving is twenty-one point three. Proposed is twenty-two-nine-six over twenty-seven-three. We did get the height at twenty-six, twenty-point-six. I think the frontage is non-conforming, if I'm correct, at eighty-five. Three-bedroom. We have a comp sheet. There is a fence that's not on their property.
Needs to be addressed, yeah.
Needs to be addressed, yeah. Let's read engineering's, while we have it. Because it's short, if I can find it. This application was reviewed for impacts on public rights-of-way and utilities. Alcott Road and Woodland Road are private rights-of-way, and Shore Street is a private paper street in this area. Two, any connections or alterations to public utilities require permission from the appropriate town department. Three, the project must not direct stormwater runoff to public property, abudders, or public rights-of-way. Four, drywells are proposed to infiltrate stormwater runoff from the roof, as we typically recommend. Five, where there is a small lot and the proposed work is close to abutting properties with the existing fencing, proposed work area location, and lock rates, it appears that erosion and sedimentation should not be an issue with the normal construction practices. However, the contractor should be held responsible for implementing erosion and sediment controls if conditions change. We recommend the following condition be included. Quotations, "Construction activity shall not cause erosion or sedimentation to the abutting properties or town right-of-way," end of quote. And then it says, "Note that the site plan shows that most of the fence is not located on the property." So, we can condition a license on that, or removal?
Yes.
Either one, I think. Any other findings? I'm good.
The access to the storage over the garage is by pull-down stairs, so you don't have to worry about habitable space up there.
Okay.
And just that, the engineering didn't seem to require it for your reading, but there is erosion control on the plan here, so, obviously, they're going above and beyond.
Yeah.
Very proud of you.
Thank you, sir.
We just established that the attic is not going to be habitable.
We did, we did, all right. We can do it in conditions, too, if you want.
Yeah.
Yeah, do both ways.
Big place for a three-bedroom.
Conditions?
Conditions. Where's that cheat sheet we have? Work hours, town work hours, per plans, all boards, all departments. They will consult with police if they need to. We'll put that one on.
Attic is not habitable.
Not habitable? Fence to be either licensed or removed? Any other further, oh, we need, we need a room encasement to be enlarged. Is that shown, is enlarged on here? Wasn't there an extra bedroom with a, we need an enlarged encasement? Am I wrong?
Oh, the office entry has to be cased.
Okay, put that as a condition.
Doesn't constitute a bedroom.
Okay. I think that's it, right? Any other conditions?
Nor did any, or tops.
The water's requiring an upgrade to one-inch.
I think that's it. You did all town, but yeah, I think that's it, yeah. Okay, all those in favor of this project? Aye. Opposed, none. Great, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Good job.
Have a lovely evening.
Could take the whole file here. All right, next we have, yeah, we're gonna move Nashewina up, in case anybody's here for that?
Actually, Madam Chair, my client intends to come to that hearing, and he's not here to shut.
Oh, okay, so we'll do the YMCA first, okay. I was gonna do it the other way, because I didn't, all right, so let me get out my All right.
Good timing.
Perfect timing. All right, so we're doing Nashewina. Let's see what we got here. All right, we have Daniel, Jay, and Christina. I ruin people's last names. D. Delandius.
Yes.
West Falmouth, Mass. Sorry if I messed that up. Applied to the zoning board of appeals for a special permit pursuant to sections two forty ten-two-A and two forty eleven-three-A-four of the Code of Falmouth to raise and rebuild the existing non-conforming single-family dwelling. The subject property is Seven Nashewina in West Falmouth. It's, it's in an RB zone. It's in the West Falmouth Harbor coastal overlay. The flood zone is AE fifteen. The lot size is ninety-two thirty-four. It's on a public road. The existing is seventeen over twenty-two-point-nine, with all structure and paving. Proposed is twenty-one-point-six over thirty-one-point-one. Let's see, we have a comp sheet here, and then I'll do some departments. Let's see what we have. Water, the existing water service material complies with our standards. The meter needs to be installed inside the home and not in a crawl space. Building department, no comment. Engineering, I'll read later. Fire department, no comment. Seven Nashewina was issued a negative determination at Conservation on two-twenty-six. The RDA form is still being processed. They'll send that out. It will only change something regarding the construction fencing along the proposed work. That's con-con. Planning, have no comment. And then we have Scott, excuse me, Board of Health. It's an assessed four-bedroom house. The existing floor plan shows three existing bedrooms. Proposed layout shows three bedrooms, so that there is no increase in flow based on provided floor plans. Second bullet point, septic plan is designed for four bedrooms and appears to comply with Title V. Additionally, a future area for denitrification, the unit, is shown and should, and should be required in the, should there be one required in the future. Third bullet point, if the applicant at some point in time wanted to have an additional bedroom in order to make use of the four-bedroom design system, a reserved area on the septic plane would need to be shown, and there is a likelihood it will trigger the need for denite, should pending the Board of Health regulation come to fruition. And that's all I have. It's all yours, Attorney.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. Before I start, just, this is a copy of the RDA that was issued by the Congress.
Oh, okay, I think it's in here. Great, thank you. I can keep this?
Yes.
Okay.
So, for the record, Kevin Clower, I'm an attorney here in town, and I'm before you tonight, representing Dan and Christina Delianidis. They're the owners of Seven Nashewina Street, and their, Mr. Delianidis is here with us this evening. They're seeking permission to raise and rebuild the existing non-conforming dwelling. So, this property is located directly across the street from West Falmouth Harbor. I shouldn't have to say it, but this is a very beautiful area of town. This particular lot is nine thousand two hundred and thirty-four square feet. It's in the RB zoning district, and it is in the AE fifteen flood zone. So presently, there's a three-bedroom, single-family dwelling on the site with a footprint of fifteen-hundred-and-seventy-two square feet. It's non-conforming to front yard setback being twenty-point-seven feet, where twenty-five is required. It's otherwise conforming to all setback and lock coverage requirements. The existing structure is in need of repairs and updates. Though it's old, it's not historically significant, and it's not subject to review by the Historical Commission. Realistically, it's not possible to rehabilitate the existing structure without triggering the substantial improvement threshold under the FEMA guidelines. So, the applicants are proposed to raise the existing dwelling and to build a new three-bedroom home, with the installation of a new four-bedroom Title V system. I had a chance to speak with my client very briefly as he walked in, and he did indicate to me that he'd be willing, and probably would have, as it is, install the denitrification system. So, we can skip some of this, because he's, the testimony is that they will install a denitrification system.
Wow, you have an effect, Tony, you love it.
I try and.
This is great.
Right.
We appreciate it.
Given the location, I think it makes sense.
Yeah.
You know, and I think that the engineer was probably trying to save some money for the applicant, because it is a fifteen-to-twenty-thousand-dollar difference. But, you know, the applicant has indicated that he's willing to do so. So, they're proposing to raise the existing dwelling and rebuild the new, a new three-bedroom home, with the installation of a new four-bedroom Title V system, which in this case will be denitrification. This will result in the first floor being elevated in compliance with the flood zone standards, three feet above the existing grade. There's a slight increase in footprint of the structure, which will increase the lock coverage by structure to twenty-one-point-six percent, which is allowable by special permit. The existing non-conforming setback will be eliminated as a nonconformity, improving from twenty-feet six-point-six inches to twenty-six-point-six inches. It will otherwise comply with side yard and rear yard setbacks, as well as lock coverage by structure paving and parking. That'll only be thirty-one-point-one percent, well below the forty percent that's allowed by right. The structure does increase in height. The proposed ridge height is thirty-two feet nine-and-nine-sixteenths inches, below the thirty-five that is allowed, and it will comply with those flood zone requirements. The number of bedrooms will remain the same. In addition, this has been reviewed by Conservation already, and an RDA has been issued. However, this does require a special permit pursuant to two forty ten-point-two-A and two forty eleven-point-three-A-four. Under ten-point-two-A, pre-existing non-conforming structures may be changed by special permit, provided they're not substantially more detrimental than what exists. The board's asked to consider the standards of two forty twelve-point-one-E, and whether or not the alteration creates any new dimensional nonconformities, impairs views and vistas, and reasonably conforms to the neighborhood. In this case, there's no new nonconformity created. The existing non-conforming setback is eliminated. There's no effect on the views and vistas of the public. The view here is really of the harbor to the, to the south, and it will be consistent with the neighborhood, as I will elaborate on. A lot of these requirements overlap with those requirements set forth in two forty eleven-point-three-A-four. That, that provision of the bylaw allows for lock coverage by structure exceeding twenty percent, up to twenty-five percent. And in that case, the board is asked to consider the size and height of the structure in relation to the neighborhood, the effects of shadow, the impact on views and vistas in public ways, and the effect of nitrogen on coastal embankments. ways, and the effect of nitrogen on coastal embankments. In this case, there's no impact of views and vistas in public way as described and though the building is larger, it is in an area with many similar sized structures. There's no effect of nitrogen on coastal embankments that will in fact be an improvement. And as to the size and fit with the neighborhood, we did submit a lot comparison worksheet looking at 13 properties within a 300-foot radius. As proposed, this is below the average footprint and certainly not out of character with the average gross floor area. Of those 13, 10 have larger footprints and 4 have larger gross floor areas. This property as proposed is appropriate with those nearby properties. This project represents an improvement over the existing conditions. It will not create any new dimensional nonconformities and will eliminate the only existing nonconformity. There's nothing about this proposal that is substantially more detrimental than what exists. I believe this meets all the requirements of 240 10.2A, 240 11.3A4, and 240 12.1E. For those reasons, I would ask that you grant the special permit and I'd be happy to address any questions that the board may have.
Mike, you want to start off?
Ready?
Sure.
I got nothing.
I don't even know what to say. I'm gonna buy a scratch ticket on my way home.
And you'll win.
So now I'm in shock. Again, just to confirm, the application says for, we had some discussion here from the Board of Health that the plan shows three. Can you confirm how many bedrooms?
There are three existing and three proposed. It's three proposed plus an office. The office has a wide enough opening that it doesn't constitute a bedroom. It's not a four-foot cased opening, but it's an opening into the hallway. So that, it is three proposed.
Okay, thank you. And hats off to the applicant for stepping up and doing I exist on. Tony can take a victory lap too. It's very nice of the applicant to do that.
I want Tony to be able to get out through the door later so I don't want to give too much praise.
He's right.
Thank you. Thank you to the applicant.
Tony. I've had a hard time fitting his knuckles.
I am, uh...
Speechless.
I'm so, well, no, I, no.
I'd like to thank the Academy.
I do want to thank your clients, that was one of the things to offer in this. I think it's an outstanding design, I know the area quite well. My only question is, is the attic going to be habitable?
So, it is finished, it's a bonus room, but you'll notice it's half walls on the stairway so there's no privacy. That's how we've typically conditioned those things in the past and the architectural plans indicate that that is an open stairway effectively. So there's no privacy there, so it's not, doesn't constitute a bedroom.
Thank you.
But we do have space for an additional bedroom should, unseptic.
Be foolish to waste that view from up there anyway.
Nick, do you have anything?
No.
You sure? Are you sure?
Suzanne, we don't need to...
Oh, sorry, Meg, I'm on, you're right. Is there anybody from the public that wants to comment on this lovely project? Come on up. We just need your name and address, please.
Yes, my name is Nancy Strickland and I live at 31 Old Duck Road and I simply want to state my support for this project. I live actually next door to them and it's the smallest house in the neighborhood and it's most appropriate and I fully support it.
Thank you.
I do like the design. Anybody else from the public?
Motion closed, Madam Chair.
Yeah.
Second?
Motion closed, any discussion up here? Any further discussion? We're all set? All those in favor of closing? I should probably ask Kevin quick. Do you have anything for the, all those in favor?
Aye.
And that's, and no opposed. Okay, so now we'll do findings.
Motion to approve.
Thank you, I always skip that, don't I?
Me.
Second. I'll second it. All right, now we'll do findings. I'll read my sheet all over. Zoning, it's an RB zone. It's in the West Falmouth Harbor Coastal Overlay, AE15 flood zone. Lot size is 9234, public road. Oh, we have the height now, the height is 32.9 and 9/16ths?
Correct.
Existing is 17 over 22.9, proposed is 21.6 over 31.1. We had a negative determination from the conservation. Water, the meter pit to be removed. We had a comp sheet. Applicant stated attic is a bonus room, not to be a bedroom. There were open stairs. Anything else we can think of?
240 10.2A, 240 11.3A4.
And most importantly, applicant has agreed to do a denite. Most important.
Gold star.
Gold star.
And they're probably gonna save themselves money at the same time.
They probably will. Any other findings you can think of? Chee-chee, no, that's conditions. Any other findings, Marie, you can think of? No, that's all I got.
Conditions.
Well, let's move on to conditions. Chee-chee, work hours.
Per plan.
Per plan, all boards, all departments, consult with police if needed.
Yeah, that's true.
Do we want to make the stairs stay open going up to that bonus room as a condition?
It's on the plans, Madam Chair.
Oh, it's per plans, okay.
Yeah, so if you, just so you know here...
I don't know if you're supposed to talk to me...
It does say half walls around the stairwell.
Oh, Attorney.
Better to grab onto after a few sunset cocktails.
Did I read Board of Health when I read?
Yes.
Okay, so I don't need to read that again. Any other conditions we can think of?
Coastal Pond Overlay District.
Yep, that's findings, yeah, I did that one. Any other conditions you can think of, Marie?
Oh, conditions.
Engineering requests that the address be posted, obviously, when it's finished. Follow soil erosion and sediment control, no stormwater runoff. Building wants a height cert and elevation cert prior to CO for FEMA complaints.
Denite system.
Yep. Denite system in conditions. I think that's all.
That's it, Mark.
That's it?
Yeah.
Y'all set, Marie?
Good.
Okay, all those in favor of this project? I oppose none. Great.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, we appreciate it. That was awesome.
Shameless this evening.
Jeez. All right. Okay, now we have Cape Cod Young Men's Christian Association, Inc., 485 Brick Hill Road in West Falmouth. Did you know that it's West Falmouth? It is, to the lights.
Yeah.
Debatable. We had to look that up. I was shocked. Anyway...
It is technically West Falmouth, but, well, you know, that's, West Falmouth only exists at the West Falmouth Post Office because if you want, if you want mail being delivered to your house, your address is Falmouth. I had a client almost walk out of a refinance once.
But I even said to ask you, why does this say West Falmouth? And we looked it up and it's West Falmouth. Requesting a special permit to construct a recreational facility to be operated as a private nonprofit club. And what do I have? It's an AGAA zoning district. We're doing a 246 1B and a 240 14 1F3. Zone 1 overlay, WRPOD, and a migration corridor. There's no flood.
Should have been a 7.7. Yeah, 247.7B.
Yep.
Oh, did I mark it down wrong? Okay, thanks. Sorry.
Okay.
Let's see, it's 6.15 acres. Proposed 16.2 over 37.2. And then I'll read some departments. And then we can have Kevin tell us, Attorney Clower tell us. Sorry about that. Oh, God. All right, let's see what we have. Building Department suggests that the leaching field at the rear of the property be prepared during construction so that in the event additional parking in the future is necessary, this area will be prepared to be utilized for such additional parking. Assessors have no comment. Planning, it's before planning for a site plan review which was approved. I don't, I have approval in here somewhere. Concom, no comment. Fire Department, no comment. Getting there. Let's see, I have Board of Health. Board of Health has approved the septic system design and it will be a denite system. And from the Water Department, 485 Brick Hill Road, water main must be looped from Josiah Path to Brick Hill Road. Water main agreement, water main extension, water main easement agreement, and water service applications must be filled out prior to excavation of the new water main and water services to the building. No, that's a whole nother project. What am I reading? That's in the wrong one. Okay, nothing from Water? Take it away, Kevin, sorry, that was the wrong, wrong...
Thank you very much, Madam Chair, members of the board. Before I begin, I anticipate that our presentation may go slightly beyond the 15-minute timeframe, so I'd request permission to go to 20 minutes if need be.
Pleasure.
Excuse me?
So I'm requesting permission to go to up to 20 minutes if need be.
Yeah.
Yes. Mark?
I'm all right with that.
I think that's to be a vote. I'm not sure.
Yes, 20 minutes.
I'll give you 20.
Go for it.
Will that include a YMCA dance?
That's for after, hopefully. For the record, Kevin Clower, I am before you tonight representing Upper Cape YMCA. I'm joined tonight by essentially our full team. So with us tonight, we have Stacy Pugh, who's the president and CEO of YMCA Cape Cod. We have Rick Fanuccio, who is the project manager with ClearPath Advisors. We have Stu Clark, who is our civil engineer with Green Seal Environmental. Also is Isabella Kennedy, who is an architect with SV Design, and Phil Faveros, who is a traffic consultant with Bowman Consulting. So we are before you tonight requesting a special permit for the proposed development of a YMCA facility at 487 Brick Hill Road, which is a portion of the parcel formerly known as 485 Brick Hill Road. As you're likely aware, the project has been in the works for a number of years. The YMCA, in conjunction with a number of local groups, has worked hard to make this vision a reality. In January of this year, they purchased a 6.13-acre parcel, which is a portion of Brick Hill Road, of 485 Brick Hill Road, from the Christ Lutheran Church. There's a significant capital campaign underway. You likely saw news of a recent donation of $10 million. There's been considerable progress made to date but not yet complete. This project has truly been years in the making with feasibility studies, working groups, site reviews, negotiations, and permitting. So this proposed development is on a 6.15-acre parcel of land. It is a, we're proposing a recreational facility which will include a health center, a gymnasium, a pool, and outdoor learning areas. The building will have a footprint of 4,000, 43,406 square feet once all phases are completed. Phase two includes a gym with a suspended track, which may not be constructed initially but is part of this application. The proposed location is 487 Brick Hill Road, again, a portion of 485, is in the AGAA zoning district. It's also within a water resource protection overlay district. It's abutted to the north and east by Falmouth High School and abutted to the west by the Village of Brick Hill. A project of this scope requires multiple levels of approval. Permitting has really been underway for a year now. At a meeting with the select board a few months ago, I said that we're at the beginning of the end stage. But at this point, we've received approval from the Cape Cod Commission as a development of regional impact, which had unanimous approval. We've received approval from the Board of Health for a nitro denitrification septic system. We've received approval from the planning board for the site plan review application as well as a special permit under 240 14.1I5B, which is to allow parking in the front yard of the facility. And finally, we're before this board. We're requesting special permits, a private club, not-for-profit, under 246.1 for lot coverage in excess of 15% in the water resource protection district, under 247.7B4, and for parking reduction in shared parking, under 240 14.1F3. I hope that we're now at the end of the end stage of this permitting. So as noted, we're requesting those special permits under those three provisions. 246.1B for the nonprofit club, 7.7B for the lot coverage exceeding 15% in the water resource protection district, and 14.1F for reduction of required parking spaces based on shared parking and special circumstances. I'm gonna review those standards with you, but there's a lot of information in this application to discuss. I'd like to hand it off to some of the other team members. Stu Clark's gonna begin by reviewing the site plan. Phil Faveros will review the traffic mitigation efforts. And Isabella and myself will review the architecturals with you to wrap up prior to questions. So I'm gonna ask Stu to come up now and go over some of the site plan information with
Good evening, Stu Clark with Green Seal Environmental. I want to just go over the site plan here and just give you a feel of what we've done. This is, as Kevin said, this process has been years. Literally, I've been on this project for three years, many configurations, many different scenarios, and this is what the design team has come up with. I didn't come up with it all on my own. But basically, we have a 43,000-square-foot building in the middle to back of the lot. We worked with the church here to use, to get a shared parking field out front. We had to do this for a couple of reasons because the zoning bylaw requires us to stay under 40% impervious area on the lot. Our lot is, I think, at 37.2. The lot in front, the church lot is right around 37 also, after these improvements. The water, well, we'll go through the utilities, so we're gonna have a water main, it's gonna be looped from Josiah's Path, that was the correct reading, and it's gonna come down the road and reconnect to Brook Hill. That was part of the site plan review and we are going to do that. As, let me just go to the, oh, let's talk about the parking field. There's gonna be one, two, three, four, five aisles. Then there's gonna be an aisle alongside up here, aisle F. This one's gonna have two, well, actually, two double-head EV chargers there, so then the other 12 spots are gonna be EV-ready, but they're not gonna have the chargers installed until there's, the need demonstrates so. But we're gonna run the conduit in the ground and have it ready. How do we advance this, Kevin? One up? Just going back to the existing conditions, this is a typical Cape Cod pine and oak forest out there. It's got, I don't know if anybody went out there for the stake up, there's briars everywhere. It's tough to get through there. Cape Cod Commission had us do a significant tree inventory out there and that's what all these tree markings are shown here in the light gray. The red marks are where we've done soil borings and test pits throughout the site for the geotech, for the building, for the septic, for the stormwater. It was, as Kevin said, it was previously loaned. It's by the Lutheran Church, it's in the AA district. And I think you went through all that, so no sense beating that up. We went through this slide, it shows you where it is. It's juxtapositioned to Long Pond down here, the surface water supply. There's the site. You went through that. Am I going the right way?
Yeah.
Am I going the wrong way?
Right.
Oh, right? All right, all right, all right. In regards to zoning, we're nowhere near any of the setbacks, we're plenty distance on all those. Again, we have to ask for a relief on the coverage because we're between 15 and 40% and Mr. Clower went over that. I should look at my notes, right? If we go back a couple to the proposed site, I didn't touch on stormwater, one of the utilities. All the stormwater is gonna be collected into rain gardens and infiltrated onsite. There are a series of six little rain gardens at the end of each one of these parking medians. Then there's gonna be like a central, larger rain garden here to handle the roof runoff because one of the conditions from the Cape Cod Commission is that we didn't just directly infiltrate the roof runoff, they wanted it to go through one of the rain gardens, so we had to take this area here and make it into a rain garden. I just wanted to touch on that because I didn't read my, I didn't read my notes. Secondly, another thing I wanted to point out here is that we're going to have a walking path, fire lane, all the way around the building. It'll be reinforced, geo grid with stone in it. We did that so that the fire department could have access to all sides of this property and this building so that we could maintain safety and just good design. All right, am I going the wrong way again? All right, there's 37.2. So now we gotta get into parking a little bit. We're proposing 176 spots and when we say that 50 spots are dedicated to YMCA, it means they're closer to the YMCA. It's like the first two rows, then there's two rows in the middle that we're kinda calling shared space, and then there's two rows next to the church. The church currently has 49 spaces out there. This project will reduce that to 34, but with the shared spaces, it's actually 126. And if you look at their occupancy rate, it's 475 people can go into that church and if you do the math on that, it comes out to requiring 158 spaces. So although it seems like we're reducing their parking, we're not, we're actually adding to their parking. That's the point I wanted to make. I did write down the church here, lot coverage... I did write down the church here, lot coverage, because we did subdivide the lot, and I just wanted to get the board comfortable with lot coverage by buildings, which is only 2% on that lot, and the lot coverage by paving structure and parking is 37. Okay, moving on, if I go the right way. This slide just shows the same thing we were just talking about, but it just also illustrates that we're providing more handicap parking than is required by ADA. We're giving 10 spaces when we're only required to have seven. I did talk about the four EV spots that are ready. One of those EV spots will be ADA accessible, so if somebody's handicapped and has an electrical vehicle, they can charge it there also. This is for Tony. We are proposing an IA system, and we have approval through the Board of Health to do so. This system is going to be a clean-to-use system. It will get down to around 11 milligrams per liter. I think that's what they get. Is the town law going to be 10? It's going to be tough to hit.
Town does three on the system, yeah.
Our plant does three.
But this is getting permitted through the DEP right now. We did get Board of Health approval. I don't want to scare you with the 11, because they have graphs showing that they get seven out of these systems all the time, but I was just going off their provisional permit with Mass DEP says they can do 11. Also, I just wanted to point out one other thing. Although this is in the water protection overlay district, it also falls in the state's surface water protection zone, and there's three zones here, the Zone A, Zone B, and Zone C. And if you look, oh, I probably can do it right on here. If you look right here, there's a line, and that's the edge of the state's zone. So I would say 80% of the leaching facility is outside the surface water protection zone by the state, but it's still in your local one. I don't, but we're still going to do the IA, because Cape Cod Commission requires you do five nitrogen, five milligrams per liter per site, maximum loading, and you have, there's a worksheet you have to do through the Cape Cod Commission to get that.
Stuart, could you add a little color to the geometric soil absorption system exactly? What's the, what does that?
This is, in order to reduce the area of leaching, well, actually, that's a false statement. It's not, it's a leaching system where they use sand and a form, and they can get more square footage of leaching area.
That's a smaller area.
If you've seen these systems, they'd use one right next door at the, at the Village of Brickhill. The exact same system there is what we're using over here, and I just get more leaching area per square foot of area of land, because we have slightly, I think our flow rate's a little, slightly bigger than theirs. I think theirs was $6,000, ours is around 7, 7, 7,600. All right. Just a rough landscape plan, just to show what we're doing here. I'm not the landscape architect, but there's going to be these activity areas over here for different age groups. Here's the walking path. Here's the location of the parking field. We would not recommend you park on top of that. It needs to get oxygen, it needs to function to get to performance duty. Here's our central rain garden here. It takes the roof runoff, which comes out here by Manolova. The trees along this side, we've worked with Mike Salamondo over here. Right now, we're just have a fence proposed in there, but there's been a lot of discussion relative to building a berm there to give his, his project a little bit of privacy. The design team also had this road come in here in a meandering fashion, so you get the wow factor when you make that last corner. There will be sidewalk connection from the main entrance all the way down to the new sidewalk that was put in as part of the 40B. So there will be that connection to encourage people to come down from the school and Gifford Road and come down on the sidewalk safely. There will also be a central walk in the middle of the parking field, and the reason we did that was because the Y had concerns about people walking in traffic, so this shortens the path and it defines an area where you know people are going to be walking. So people are not going to be crossing over, and, well, they probably will anyway. But we, the intent is, we don't want them crossing over all the medians and moving in and out of cars, just for safety. And I think that's the end. Oh, I, I stand corrected. We have a lighting plan here. I'm just showing basically the, what we're proposing for lights. The purple circles are one style, but that's, that, the circle's a red circle, the purple circle, and I guess they're black circles. That's the, that's the limit of one-foot candle, just to show you how the parking lot's lit. And I think that's it for site civil stuff. I don't know if you want your questions now, later, or?
I think we'll, we'll keep going with the presentation and then come back for questions.
Appreciate your time.
Thanks.
So I'd like to have Phil Viveros from Bowman Engineering Traffic Consultants come up right now. Phil's going to speak to traffic assessment and mitigation measures.
Good evening, and for the record, can, hopefully, hopefully the mic works and you can hear me. Phil Viveros with Bowman Consulting. We were the traffic engineers for this project, and I'm going to just briefly summarize the traffic study that we conducted for this site, which was completed in October of 2023 and was submitted to Cape Cod Commission as part of the DRI process and the town planning board for approval. The study area that you see here, we looked at four intersections. You can see our site here, and the four intersections, if I go from right to left, include the signalized intersection of Brickhill Road with Gifford Street, the two ramp intersections at Route 28, and the intersection to the far left of Brickhill Road with West Falmouth Highway. We conducted counts in July of 2023 during the summer season, made adjustments to traffic to look at peak conditions for traffic as well as average conditions, particularly because, and I'm not sure, I don't know if this was mentioned, but the site is, abuts Falmouth High School to the north and east, and so keeping in mind that traffic conditions with school in session was something we wanted to make sure we captured as part of the study. We conducted standard crash analyses, operational analyses for the four intersections, in looking at generating trips for the site, proposed trips. Rather than looking at standard ITE tables and guidance, we actually counted three different YMCA sites, one in West Barnstable, one in Middleborough, and one in Swansea, and took the trip data from those three sites to help us develop a trip rate to determine the trips that would be generated from this project. And you can see in the morning and afternoon peak hours, you're looking at a range of 170 to 199 trips. That's both entering and exiting the site during those peak hours. We conducted a traffic analysis, looking at both, again, average and peak conditions, where we noticed some delays at a couple of intersections that were noticeable, but I wouldn't say were substantial. And as part of that process, we were looking at ways to reduce traffic with what we call TDM, traffic, transportation demand management, measures that are common for projects of this size. There's a couple of slides that list out what these are. So a lot of these are typically geared toward workers, employees of the site, but also because of the use here as a club with obviously benefits to the greater community. We were considering trying to find ways to reduce trips for those who come here for the facilities. So looking at not just, again, employee, you know, staggering shifts in carpool brochures, but also looking at ways to provide bicycle racks, provide options for transit, including the SmartDart on-demand system, and coordinating with the Cape Cod Regional Transit Authority to hopefully create a dedicated bus stop here. So all of those measures were outlined in our report and have been, again, approved by the Cape Cod Commission and the planning board. One other note I'll say at the bottom of this slide is, again, due to its proximity to Falmouth High School, where we expect a lot of cross-use from students at the high school, that in itself is essentially a TDM measure, where you're saving trips, car trips from the high school to the facility because of the walking paths that Stu mentioned a moment ago. The next couple of slides, just look at different mitigation measures. We submitted a follow-up memo to the Cape Cod Commission in July that looked at some of their concerns and looking at ways to mitigate traffic delays. Most of these are going to be geared around the signalized intersection at Gifford Street. So you see, looking at the yellow and red times for the traffic lights, making sure that those are adjusted to standards, as well as the pedestrian clearance intervals, making sure that the walk lights are timed so that there's adequate time to cross the intersection at the crosswalks that are there. Advanced warning signs, only the northbound approach from Gifford Street has a sign that lets you know that there's a traffic signal, and there, the nearest adjacent signal from this intersection is a little over three-quarters of a mile away. So we propose adding signal warning ahead sign, or signal ahead signs, just standard warning signs, to the other approaches, making sure that the existing sign is also adequate in terms of visibility. The equipment, you know, there are some adjustments that can be made to the signal equipment in terms of flashing yellow arrows to help signify left turn movements, adding backplates with reflective visors to make them more visible, particularly at night, and making sure that the pedestrian push buttons are accessible for those with disabilities or have hearing issues or whatnot. So making sure that that equipment is up to current standards. And then again, the transit use is, again, a mitigation measure, making sure that the site is tied into the Cape Cod Regional Transit Authority system. And then pedestrian sidewalks. So there is an adjacent 40B development to the west of this site. It's our understanding that that project will develop a sidewalk network that connects in front of our driveway and to, ultimately, to the intersection of, at Gifford Street as part of that project. So that provides connectivity in front of this site for pedestrians.
Could, I'm sorry, could you repeat that with regard to the project store?
So the, the 40B residential project to our west proposes to put a sidewalk in on Brickhill Road that goes in front of our driveway, and that will connect to the intersection at Gifford Street.
Thank you, thank you.
It's already in.
It's already in.
Okay. At the time, we were proposing this.
That's why I asked.
Yeah, so. And we'll be happy to answer any questions at the end of the presentation.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry.
You're up to 24, Kev.
Well, I need a few more.
Okay. We'll give them five more minutes, everybody?
Yes, yes. I talk fast. So I am going to do some of the architectural review on this as well. This has been designed by SV Design, and they prepared really a beautiful set of plans with a design and aesthetic that draws attention. So you'll see here, this is the view from each facade of the building. Designed from the front, it's really staggered to break up the massing. The proposed ridge height of this building is 34 feet above existing grade. Each elevation really does have different features, provides character from each side. This is not just a box. You'll see each, each of the different facades really has a different look to it, and, and I think is really a unique and interesting design. They've drawn from local Cape Cod character, as they put it, both architectural and natural, to use some of their inspiration, for some of the inspiration for the design of the building. Now, I want to review the standards for the special permits. So we're going to begin with 7.7b, which is lot coverage exceeding 15% in a water resource protection district. Under this provision, we have to provide, there's a system for groundwater recharge that does not degrade groundwater quality, with permanent maintenance of those recharge areas being held by the, by the applicant or the owner, which would be welcomed as a condition. Based on the testimony we provided, as well as the site plan review decision and our work with the engineering department, the board can credibly find that the proposal will not adversely affect the quality or quantity of water in the, in the water resource protection district. It will not result in substantial disturbance once completed of water-related characteristics of the site, or exceed the maximum loading standard for nitrate, nitrogen impact on groundwater. Though not necessarily part of this request, I wanted to address one of the biggest hurdles we had to contend with, which was wastewater discharge within the water resource protection district. So that district, that overlay, limits wastewater discharge to 7.5 gallons per day per thousand square feet of land area. So approximately one acre of land would allow for a three-bedroom home. The proposed design flow for the YMCA is just over 7,600 gallons per day. Based on that calculation, it would require an additional 17 acres of land. However, we've worked with town staff over the last few months to arrive at a solution. Adjacent to the high school is a 19.87 acre landlocked parcel of land owned by the town, and through the town manager and the select board, the town has assigned the groundwater discharge rights from that parcel to the YMCA, which provides for more than sufficient discharge rights. This concept's not without precedent. Title V allows for banking and assignment of certain nitrogen credits, and though this is a local regulation, that concept provided the basis for this request. The select board already reviewed and approved that assignment, a copy of which was included, a signed copy of which is included in the application package. That's presently being held in escrow by town council pending the completion of permitting. I want to, again, note how grateful we are to the town manager's office and the select board for finding a way to work with us on a solution to that. The second aspect of the special permits, 240, 14.1f3, which is allowing for the reduction of required parking spaces based on shared parking in special circumstances. As Stu noted, the YMCA has entered into an easement agreement with the Christ Lutheran Church to allow for shared parking. Both the YMCA and the church have dedicated parking spaces, 50 for the YMCA and 34 for the church, and 92 shared spaces between them. Based on the parking calculations, a total of 216 spaces would be required for the YMCA. With the 25% buyright reduction, that's 162 spaces. We're proposing 142 spaces. So those parking requirements can be reduced based on, again, shared parking in special circumstances. And a special circumstance here is that our parking requirements really don't scale for a building like this. A pool usage is not envisioned in the bylaw. The pool itself accounts for 14,206 square feet. That would be 71 parking spaces. We're not putting 71 cars full of people into the pool. It's just not the case. So I believe the board can find that the reduction can be granted without derogating from intent of the bylaw. Lastly, the third aspect of the special permit is 246.1b for a club not-for-profit. There's no specific standard set forth in that section, so we have to look at 240, 12.1e, the standard which governs all special permits. The overarching question in that section says, "Does the proposed use have an adverse effects that overbalance its beneficial effects on the town or neighborhood?" As consideration, this site is more than adequate in size for the proposed use. It's suitable and well situated for the proposed use. There's, as has been noted, little impact on traffic and no impact on safety. The applicant provided more than adequate methods of sewage disposal and drainage. Utilities and public services are already present and are, again, more than adequate, and there's no impact on the supply of affordable housing, and it has been approved by the planning board under the site plan review. More importantly, I don't believe there's any way one could find that the adverse effects, to the extent there are any, overbalance the benefits of this project. My kids don't care what I do for a living. They don't understand what I do for a living. I tell them, I go to hearings, and, "Do you have a meeting, Dad?" And, you know, "Are you going to be home tonight, Dad?" No. But when I told them I'm working on the YMCA, they go, "Well, what's that mean?" I said, "Well, we're going to have a pool." Now I get, "Dad, is this a meeting for the YMCA? Dad, is this a meeting for the YMCA?" This is a project that the town and its citizens have wanted for decades. This is a project that will impact people of all ages for years and years to come. And I say this with all due respect to my other clients that I represent before this board, it is the honor and the highlight of my career to be able to be involved in this project. For these reasons, I believe we've demonstrated this meets the requirements of 246.1b, 247.7b, 240, 14.1f3, and 240, 12.1e. And as such, I believe this board can and should issue the special permit as requested. I, along with our team, would be glad to address any questions the board may have.
Great, thanks.
Want to start off?
Well, yeah. Well, first off, with your first comment, I was surprised you didn't know that that was West Falmouth.
I didn't know. I thought it stopped at Sandwich Road. I did not know.
Bowman's embedded in West Falmouth since the Mayflower was a tree. If you want to tell them they don't live in West Falmouth, I'll skip that day. As far as this is concerned, no, it's a great project. They've been trying to build this for concerned, no, it's a great project. They've been trying to build this for 20 years.
Decades.
Yeah, it's been a long time. There's been faces that came and went and put a considerable amount of time into this, and I'm glad to see it's at this point. And I only have a few small questions. There's not going to be any permeable asphalt here?
So...
And why? Not that, you know, it hasn't been engineered in a proper fashion, but I was just curious as to...
So this is the area that'll be, that'll have any asphalt, I think, for...
But not, it's not a permeable asphalt?
No, it's not.
And why is that? I'm just curious.
I think it has to do with upkeep.
Longevity.
Longevity.
Sweeping.
And we do have, we have a share, so it's worth noting, you know, what, right here is the property line that separates us and the church, so much of the parking is in the church lot. We, part of our easement with the church is that we are responsible for upkeep and maintenance of the parking area on your lot.
And the big thing with the permeable pavement is sweeping of it, correct, to maintain it?
I believe so. I can't, I can't speak much to it beyond that. I just...
And then, I guess it's going to take a while. I just, is there any plant, are there aquatic plants in that rain garden? Of any description?
It does look like they have plants here, and in the plan set, there is the full, you know, explanation of what those plants mean and...
And what they do.
Yeah.
Whatever. I'll look further into it. At this point, I don't have any questions.
And I do know that part of the planning board process, we increased the drainage time of that retention pond substantially. So even in a hundred-year storm, it drains incredibly quickly.
Yeah, they're substantially, like I said, I'll look further. I don't have any questions. All the luck in the world.
Great project. Just, again, from a testimony, Attorney Klar, we had, on the parking, we had 50 on-site, 92 shared, 34 for the church, for 176.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, I thought you said...
So I said, I said...
I'm okay with you saying 176. I just wanted to clarify.
Yeah, so let me just clarify what I did say.
Okay. That was on...
So 142 spaces for the Y, not counting the 34 spaces dedicated to the church.
Okay. Thank you. In the 470-some-odd pages of the application, I thought that there was an open item on the site distance.
We provided site distances for, for planning board.
Okay. I appreciate that. Thank you for the denitrification system. One more, just a little more color on the credit parcel and how that came along in the, in the volume couches.
So basically, there's, there's a 19-acre parcel of land that is adjacent to the high school, and that, what the town has done is they've assigned the wastewater discharge rights, basically saying that, to the extent that site has ever developed, it's never, well, it's not going to be. It's a landlocked parcel, but to the extent it ever was, nothing there is going to produce wastewater, because, so it could be playing fields, it could be a number of things that's still not going to produce wastewater. But the town has assigned those wastewater rights to the YMCA, which effectively gives us the credit for that land. So even though we don't have that additional 19 acres, we have the credit for that 19 acres, because that's not going to be developed in a way that's going to add wastewater to the Water Resource Protection District.
And that's specific, as long as the Y is there, it's not transferable to the...
Nope. And it's, and a copy of that assignment is, is included in the package.
Okay.
And Attorney O'Keefe and I worked through that language at length to make sure that the town was satisfied, and that's been reviewed by town manager's office and the select board, and that was approved and signed.
Okay. My last, pretending to be an attorney, question. The term of the church easement?
Easements don't have terms. They're typically in perpetuity unless they're, unless they're mutually revoked or revoked by the, it's called the dominant estate. So in this case, whoever has the right to use the other property has what is considered the dominant estate. So that, they, the dominant estate can revoke an easement, the serving estate cannot, but there's no term on it.
Okay. Thank you. Great project, and hats off to you and your team.
Thank you.
I only have a couple of questions. Are there documents for the shared parking?
Yes. There is, included in the application package.
It was in the file. I looked through the file. It took, it's...
We included the traffic report, which is, I was, I was kind of like, should we, should we not? Because that itself is 350 pages, whatever it is.
And my other question, my other question, snow removal?
Yep. So snow removal is done basically from, let's call it, west to east along each aisle and pushed this direction over here.
And we'll leave it at on-site, uncleaned?
I mean, it's, if, depending on the size of the storm, I think if, if there was obviously a significant storm that was able, that impeded the pathways, that have to address that, but the...
Well, I'm worried about long pond.
Sure. So, well, the snow, I mean, the snow will be pushed, and it's not going to be driven over, it's going to be plowed into the, the space up here.
Okay. All right, I think I'm good. Tony?
It's obviously a wonderful project. I hate to have to ask a couple of questions.
Sure you do.
Yeah, sure. I know.
He's been waiting, haven't we?
No, I have, I have. With the transfer of rights document, and I know it's been vetted, but I don't always understand these things. It's specific to the YMCA's use. God forbid anything should happen to the YMCA. What would happen to a successor to the use?
It reverts to the town.
So the, that, the transfer of rights reverts to the town, which then makes the property unusable.
So, I mean, if the YMCA builds this, it's, the, the language in the, in the assignment basically says that the assignment is good so long as the YMCA is, is the owner of the property. Now, if, if there were to be a change, I mean, the town, again, has, has options and basically the right to revoke certain aspects of that. So, you know, that is...
Would it come back to the ZBA?
I think it would have to. It would have to go through all but its planning again. Planning, zoning, Cape Cod Commission, I mean, this, it would, it would be a fundamental change in, in the nature of this building.
So because our zoning bylaws can be opaque at times...
Obtuse, definitely.
I have to ask this question because there is no definition of, of private club not conducted for profit. And my question to you, and I really hate to ask this question, but it's got to go on the record since there is no definition of that, and when there is no definition in our zoning bylaw, we have to revert to other areas such as the Massachusetts Building Code to define what it is. Under the zoning, this building could not exist unless it was a private club not conducted for profit, am I correct?
Mm-hmm.
So I looked up the charter, the corporate docs from 1966, and it could go both ways. Those are very old documents written in a day that you probably would never write that ever again that way. What makes this a private versus a public club? And I think this is very important.
So typically with a YMCA, you have a membership in order to use the facilities. There are obviously waivers to that if you're part of a swim club, for instance. You don't necessarily need to have a Y membership to be part of the swim club. But it, you know, it is, it's not, while it is a public facility in the sense that it is open to the public, you need to have a membership in order to use it. So that, that's what would constitute as private.
Because the public could not just walk through the door and enjoy the pool. They have to join.
Joe Public can't walk in and dive headfirst into the pool. For lots of reasons.
I appreciate that. Thank you. That, well, it certainly clears it up, and I think that's on the record. Well, and I'm not sure if this was covered. Will any hazardous material, liquids be stored on-site?
I think there will be pool chemicals on-site, of course, treatment chemicals for the pool. Those will be stored in appropriate areas within the building. Nothing stored outside.
So that is covered under 247.7 in the Water Resource Protection Overlay District?
That's really intended towards storage of, of materials outside.
Outside, all right.
So this is, this is going to be encased in a building and with the appropriate...
It's covered, it's covered.
They'll have to have a sump.
Right, so that's covered. Because we're next to a surface public water supply, not next to, but adjacent to across the street, it does talk about the need for downgrading groundwater monitoring wells. Is there, do you think, or maybe this is for your engineer, is there any need to put a downgrading monitoring wells where you are by the public water supply?
So we don't believe so based on, based on the stormwater management plan that's been produced, vetted through town engineering and the planning board.
Pretty good chance they already exist.
I don't know the fact. That's why I have to ask a question. I just want to be on the record that they don't believe that, that, that bylaw, that they don't need downgrading water monitoring wells, and that's covered. I guess that my, thank you for that, my last question would be, I'm not sure I heard this or not, we're talking about transportation and all of that. Is there going to be a bus stop? There will be, will the bus be transporting folks there?
So there, there is a bus drop-off right here, you'll see, is a bus drop-off. So this is the drop-off loop, and then this area is intended for bus drop-off.
Well, the...
Oh, CCR, we're working on, that's something that we're currently working on getting a designated stop created.
All right. Thank you for the IA system very much. Thank you. Those were my questions.
My man's a retired banker.
Can I ask a quick question on Tony's? All the chemicals for the pool, will the fire department like have a list of all that?
Yes.
Can that be provided?
Stacy's going to come up and speak real quick.
Okay. Thanks.
Good evening. Stacy Pugh, President and CEO of the YMCA Cape Cod. Our pool chemicals do require hazardous materials permit, and we will work with the town to get that permit on an annual basis, and they require hazardous materials plan, et cetera, et cetera.
Okay, great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
They require the foundation to be built up so it can hold the amount of chemicals...
Sometimes, like, the fire department gets a list in certain agencies just so they know what they're walking into. I, that's why I was asking.
I mean, I think that, you know, obviously, as we've talked about a number of times, any permit here is not a blanket approval. So I think the Y is going to go above and beyond to make sure that this works for everyone and is safe and appropriate, and really a wonderful project.
Yeah. Nick, you're the one with the kids that are going to be loving if you're involved in this.
You know, I've heard about it for a long time.
Yeah. You're going to be going there with those kids.
The plan is, all things being equal, we hope to break ground in September.
Yeah. Does anybody have any other further questions up here?
When's the projected completion?
Completion, two years?
20 months from the start.
20 months from the start.
Beginning of summer.
Anybody from the public want to comment on this project? Come on up, sir.
Good evening, members of the board. My name is Mike Solamondo, with the Village of Brickhill, and with the Butters, the most affected by the project. I've met with Stu and Rick out on the site, and I, and I've seen that they've made some changes in, you know, and they've been, they're, they're really trying. They've, they've helped with the bus turnaround before it was right up in our, right, almost in, in some of these homes that we just, we just got approved after just as many years as they've been doing. That's how many years that I went through getting the Village of Brickhill approved. I only ask that, you know, we've come to an agreement that, you know, that, you know, we were going to, you know, see how it, because it's really something that's fluid when you, after you see it, after they get through with the roadway, is what we could do. I'd really like to see them, and they've, well, just somewhat agreed that we do some type of berming, all right, because I think berming is going to do a lot better than some fencing. And it gives the, and the planting of evergreens and that type of shrubbery would, you know, would help with, I'm just trying to protect my homeowners or the people that are buying the homes. They're going to be right next to this. I mean, we're all for it. Nobody's, nobody's against the Y. I'm very much, I mean, even to the point where we gave the, you know, we gave the stub hoping that I was going to save them money of, you know, you know, 400 feet of eight-inch water. You know, that was voluntarily. It was just not something, although we put it in the minutes, you know, something that I offered to do. I'm looking forward to them producing a great project. I just wish that the road wasn't that, but it, it is what it is now. What we can do is work with what we got. So I appreciate the new design that they've come. I have only one other question that I'm, that I have for my homeowners, and that is the lighting. I mean, I know that we're not allowed to have spotlights or anything on our, on our homes, and now we're going to have, you know, some pretty, and I don't know what the town, to be honest, with the luminous, on the, on the town's requirement for parking. I was hoping maybe for bollards so we don't have a forest of, of, of lights at night in people's backyards, but I know that there's certain laws that have to, that are requirements. I just don't know how we can meet the requirements of the town and still keep aesthetically, you know, for my homeowners to, you know, to keep the lighting down, you know, in their nighttime viewing. And I don't know if that's, you know, possible, but I, I don't know what, what a bollard covers as compared to high-intensity lighting, you know, high up. That's something that maybe Stu can...
I think the attorney is going to address that, if you'd like.
Stu can help with that. But those are some of the questions I have. The beautiful, it's a beautiful building. Again, I wish the access road was someplace else. I think that if the church can share, you know, the parking, why couldn't it share the driveway? But evidently, that's, that was overlooked. But like I said, they've been, they have addressed some of my concerns, but I hope they follow through. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. I can speak to Solamondo's comments. So we have been in discussions with, with Mr. Solamondo about potentially altering this rather than a fence to create a berm. And what we've basically come down to is, we're not opposed to it, and if it ends up making the most sense, we're more than willing to do so, and we'd come back for an administrative approval to do that. It's really going to depend as they start clearing, if they start doing road layout, if they start doing excavation and moving fill, as to what makes the most sense there. In terms of the access road, I mean, unfortunately, this is really the only place that it could go. There is a driveway for the church here. However, just on the north side of the driveway is a parsonage where the rector lives, and they didn't particularly want all of the traffic from the YMCA going within a few feet of the parsonage. There's also enough land here so that the church could still theoretically subdivide their remaining parcel, and they wanted to be able to do so because they're not sure what their future holds. So respecting that, this really was the only option for the access point. In terms of the lighting, it is going to be all dark-skY compliant. There is no infiltration. We have the luminance plan. We have, you know, this is, we'll, we'll abide by all the same regulations and conditions that would otherwise be required, but the lighting plan that we have submitted is dark-skY compliant.
Madam Chair.
Go ahead, Mark.
Well, it seems to me quite logically that the berm would deal with Mr. Solamondo's concern of the headlights, and a row of arborites would certainly, especially as they grow, deal with his other concerns of light, because it is a multi-story building. And putting that off to administrative approval, I think Mr. Solamondo would probably be more satisfied if we could deal with this as we go. I mean, it doesn't seem like that unreasonable a request.
No, and we've been, we've been very open to it throughout the process. It's just a matter of, unfortunately, we're not going to, you know, this, you've been to the site. This is a tough site to figure out what's what.
Well, I mean, you're talking about a, something that would be located right on the property line, which isn't going to change or vary. I mean, I mean, I don't, I don't think it would require for him to be here every meeting, for him to get what he wants. I think it's quite reasonable what he's asking, and, and I think it's a quite...
Simple fix.
Simple fix, which, and any, putting off any administrative approval or later on down the road or whatever, I don't think is fair.
May I just follow up on that a little bit?
Go ahead. Go ahead.
I'm looking at sheet C100. Is the, and it's outlined as a wildlife corridor along those...
Is that... Is that of the, of the site plans, Tony?
I'm sorry, what was the question?
Is that, that's of the site plans?
Yes, C-100.
It is a wildlife corridor, yes.
All right. What are the conditions surrounding that wildlife corridor? Does it have to have particular open area, does it remain clear? Because Mr. Solomani was talking about a berm, and I'm gonna get into that in a second, but really, what's happening is, if you got this corridor, are there conditions that Cape Cod Commission put on that?
No, it's not Cape Cod Commission, it's actually part of the review by the planning board, and, and so it's been approved as is, as a wildlife corridor. We did confirm that having a berm with plantings there would also be acceptable as a wildlife corridor, but I think that we were in a position where we weren't ready to alter the plans coming before this board. We have been dialoguing with Mr. Solomando throughout this process since the first planning board hearing, and will continue to do so, and, you know, this is, I think, something that can certainly be worked out between the neighbors.
So, just file a part of this, so in your opinion, the berm of some sort, some size, because you just don't throw a berm in, because you have to spill over in property on that side, is, is it your belief, or your engineer's belief, that a berm could be constructed there in a fashion that maybe needs to, I don't know how you do it, maybe take up some of the adjacent land, or will it be all on your property?
I'm willing to work...
Come on up, come on up. Thanks.
I'm willing to work with both of them, I mean, with Rick, Rick and Stu, we walked the property, I mean, we were gonna, we were gonna do it, and as I was explaining to the board, they, you know, and, and they've made some of the improvements that I've asked already. I mean, I'm, will, I, I wanna work with them, and we'll work, and I can, I can start the berm, I, you know, I've, I've got ideas of even starting the berm on my, on my side of the, the property, and then working it and help, helping them filter in, 'cause I have extra, I, I've got extra material that I can use, and I've got certain areas, especially in pretty vital areas, if you can see in this area here, which I'm gonna leave as open space, but I can spill some of this and build a mound right here on my property, some of it may curtail like above five feet into the wildlife corridor, but we're just, we're just, we came up with a, where we could plant on both sides of the line, and...
What I'm hearing, what I believe I'm hearing is that both sides, both properties appear to have some level of solution for a berm, you're willing to give something, maybe the Y is willing to give a little bit with regard to the berm, because you have a slope, obviously, that's gonna be on that berm, and that's gonna end up in someone's backyard.
That's correct.
People who, I don't know what you're sold, but people may already be occupying some of that property, or is that common area?
Some are, but some aren't, but I've, you know, I've already planted on my, on my side and on, on the church's side with, with the church's permission previously.
I just wanted to make sure that what we heard tonight is that there's a possibility that both of you are working together to establish that type of screening, that's...
Yes, yes.
And will be kept the prize of this, and this will be part of our process as well?
That's why I think we have to do it administratively, 'cause the plan doesn't show berm, 'cause they're not completed yet with their discussion.
Well, I mean, as they, I mean, as it is, I don't, Kevin just seems to indicate that this is gonna be done not in front of our eyes, and I, I'm not so sure that's the...
I can, there, there's levels of administrative approval, so this is something we can come back to the board for administratively.
Yeah, well, I, I just think that we should, it should be an open process that we can see, so everybody's...
Let's make it a condition.
Yeah, well, they have to come up with a proposal before we can make any conditions.
So, there comes a...
Yeah, just put a condition, they come back and show us the...
So, yeah, I mean, 'cause as we've said, as I mentioned, there are, there are levels of administrative approval, there's things Norine signs off on, and then, as we'll see in about a few minutes when I come up for my next hearing, there's administrative before the board, and to the extent, you know, as we work through things with Mr. Solomando, if we're able to figure, come up with a plan that works for everyone, and we'll come back, submit that administratively to the board.
Sounds like a plan, yes.
Want it to be open.
Anybody else from the public wanna comment on this? Anybody else have any further questions up here?
No, I could have one about the bus stop, but Tony...
You good over there? You have a question on the bus?
Yeah, but Tony, and, you know, it's still in the making, I was just kinda concerned with the Cape Cod regional transit stopping on Brick Hill proper, I think that's, could be an issue, I'm just curious as to how it's gonna be dealt with.
Are you kinda thinking they're gonna come into that little bus loop area, is that what you're gonna try to do?
You know, I'm honestly not sure, I haven't been part of those discussions. I'm not sure if the Transit Authority is willing to do so, but we, we will have sidewalks available up to Brick Hill if they're not able to come down.
They do have a, a policy where they'll go off-road if you call, so I think that's something, it can be arranged, but I'm, as Tony is, I, I'm kinda concerned about a bus stopping on Brick Hill proper.
But we do have a bus stop on-site, so we do have space if they're willing, if they're willing to do so.
And I'm sure the bus will pull in, but like I said, it's, this thing will all flesh out at some point, but, you know, we gotta keep it safe.
So, would the high school be potentially using the Y, like the pool for competition or that sort of thing?
High school doesn't currently have a swim team.
Right, so, but if that were to potentially develop, would that be a potential arrangement?
Absolutely.
Because I think, you know, in those types of circumstances, when schools have meets with other schools or whatever else it is, there are buses that transport those kids, so presumptively, that bus would be delivering those individuals to this property as opposed to driving to the high school and the kids hiking over, right?
Yes, yeah, yeah, no, they'd be, they'd be delivered, dropped off at on-site, they're not DoorDash, but, they'd be dropped off.
But they could just go back to Falmouth High and park over there.
They could, but Barnsville High School, I know for instance, uses the, high in its YMCA is their home pool, so...
At least it's close enough, they can just go park back there.
And, and as, as Stu mentioned, there will be walking paths between the, the high school.
Across that 19 acres?
Yeah, well, no, it's not, it's not even, the 19 acres isn't between, it's, the, the high school backs up to this, if I show, if I pull up the...
So, they could even require that they park on the high school and...
Yeah, they could.
Or at least just drop them.
So, so, you know, this is the high school site right here, and this is, this is us, so, yeah, there's, they're, they're, then the intent is to have a walking pass between the YMCA and the high school.
I think that's great about the water discharge.
Parking overflow.
I think that's great with the water discharge, it's wonderful. Anyway, any, are you all set?
I'm, I'm good to go, motion to...
Everybody, are you all set, Noreen? Noreen, you good?
I guess, yeah, I, I have piles and piles of notes here, but, you know, it's mostly just details for a decision essentially.
Mark, you're up. All right, motion to continue to win? Is that how it's gonna go?
I, I think I can close.
Close?
Yeah.
Motion to close?
Second.
Yeah, we have a motion to close in a second, you all set?
I'm good.
Everybody up here is all set to close? All those in favor of closing? Aye, opposed, none? Any discussion before we... And you're a fat. Motion to approve with conditions. I'll second it.
That's simple, huh?
We have a motion and a second, let's do some findings. All right. Massive amount of findings. It's in an AGAA zone, it's on 6.15 acres, it's in Water Resource Protection Overlay District, Wildlife Corridor. You're allowed to correct me on the parking, 'cause it did get confusing.
It is confusing.
We have 176 spots, 11 accessible, 4 EV, 142 for the YMCA, 34 for the church, 92 shared through a recorded document.
Yes, so of that, of that 142, 90 are...
Of that, okay, thank you. 159 are in the front, 17 in the back, there are 10 side, thank you, 10 bike racks is what I found in here. Let's see what else I have, the special approval, it was, a special permit was approved by the planning board February 11th, the building size, 68 for 70?
That's the horizontal square footage.
Traffic study was done, I didn't get the dates on that, but that's okay, there was one done.
October 2023.
Okay, thank you, October 23. 600 feet back from Brick Hill, it shall not affect affordable housing, Cape Cod Commission approval, Marine and Environmental Service has approved the Wildlife Corridor, the water main will loop. We had one neighbor question about lighting and the berm.
246.1B, 247.7B4, 240.14F3.
A 37.2 coverage, denitrification system.
Credit parcel?
How do we write that, the finding about the parcel?
Subject to, subject to an assignment of groundwater discharge rights.
Thank you. Coverage posted.
Water Resource Protection Overlay District.
Yeah, I already did that one, yep.
Site distances were okay.
Can you think of any other ones, Noreen? I think we covered them pretty good.
Yeah, I, I mean, I think, you know, just given the facts in this case, it's obviously gonna be pretty voluminous, so, you know, I don't know if you wanna sit there and go through it, but we would obviously recite all the facts relating to the submissions, the parking sizes, existing conditions, traffic study.
In terms of findings, I think you can make the 12.1E findings about adequacy of site.
Yep.
12.1E?
So, so, if I may, Madam Chair, under 7.7B, you can find that there is a system for groundwater recharge that does not degrade groundwater quality, with permanent maintenance of those recharge areas to be done by the, by the applicant. You can find that it will not adversely affect quality or quantity of water in the Resource Protection District, or result in substantial disturbance of water-related natural characteristics, or exceed maximum loading standards.
You did explain the 61B, the for-profit.
Yep, and then under, yep, so 6.1B would be the not-for-profit is the finding there, as well as the 12.1E findings relative to the site, adequacy of size of the site, suitability of the site for proposed use, impact on traffic and safety, applicant sewage disposal and drainage methods, utility in public services, impact on affordable housing, and consideration of the planning board's site plan review decision, and then under 240.14F, the board can find that due to, based on special circumstances and shared parking, that a reduction in the qual, quantity of parking spaces is, is approved.
And the agreement documents will be provided, okay.
Let's see, bridge height 34?
34 feet above existing grade.
Good job, I didn't get that. Once the guy who's running the system gets it tweaked, it very likely will run in the seven range, and they're known to.
Mr. Peterson, just so we're clear here, we're actually going down in grade, so that you measure height from the existing average grade, so we're digging down, 'cause the actual, from, from, from altered grade will be 37, but from natural grade it'll be 34, which is how the, is calculated.
Thank you, we have some material to build a berm with.
Now, do we need a 53G account on this for site review by an engineer during construction?
Well, so, that would be a question I would raise with the board. The town engineering did refer to their stormwater engineering group that they're using, CEI, they did a stormwater review, they had some 23 comments about items that they were looking for, you also, with the amount of clearing, are gonna need a construction general permit, et cetera, so I guess the question to the board is whether you want someone to oversee those details, because the town has a limitation on what they're doing on the property because it's private property, so they'll be interested in what happens at the street, street opening permit, that type of thing, not within the parcel itself.
Well, who would inspect that otherwise?
Right, well, that's the question, and, you know, whether you want someone...
Yeah, peer review, just have it on the record, yeah.
So, how do we structure a peer review?
So, I guess the question is, I mean, if it's something that you're interested in, you would condition that you want to have a peer engineer and, you know, what their general scope would be.
What would that general scope be?
So, I would, I would just say, we, we did go through the engineering review process with the town engineering department, as well as stormwater review, and those 23 questions have been addressed and answered, which is part of how we ended up getting a site plan review decision. So, there is, there has been, you know, a high level of scrutiny to these stormwater management plans, that's already been conducted and, and explored through the engineering department.
That would mean it would be a minimal engineering expense, it would be, it's kind of...
I think it's pretty important.
I'd like to be very clear.
Upon us to have somebody to keep half an eye on it, if what you say is all correct, the expense should be quite limited. Yeah, five or 10,000 would probably be enough, but, I mean, I, I think for the comfort of...
Big scope.
Yeah.
But I think we should be relatively clear for scope, because we don't want them to have to spend more money than necessary.
No, but I think...
But somebody's gotta oversee that.
So, there is a construction control document that's reviewed and stamped by the engineer, as well as ASBIL plans for all of the, all of the stormwater management, that'll be submitted. You can make submission of those to this board, as well as the building department, a condition.
Are you talking about AIA documents?
No, so, let Stu speak to that real quick.
Yes, as, as part of the construction process, I have to sign a construction control document, it's through the building department, and, and then I have to do an ASBIL, and I have to certify that what was built was built in accordance with the design plans, and I have to do the same for the planning board under their conditions of approval, so that there is gonna be scrutiny on this project from my office, it's my design, I wanna make sure it works, and throughout the whole process, from the time they dig the hole, they lay the, the pipe in there, I'm gonna be watching them all the time.
But this is not done on an AIA document basis?
No, that, AIA is usually the, the payment process.
You're not signing off with the, whoever the contractor is, or are you signing off?
I will be watching the contract to make sure he's installing the work appropriately, because I work...
Request in, you're signing off on that?
I do not do that, the architect will.
The architect does, but we're talking about the site as well as the building.
Right, and the civil, you know, the architect may refer the, the civil portions back to me to sign, but she will sign, or SV will be the, the lead in that, but I will, if they want me to, I'm gonna be doing all the shop drawing reviews, and also when, when they come in for a manhole or a pump, for the, the pump station, they have to send that to me, I review that, I stamp that as approved, resubmit, or provide something different. So, there, there are checks and balances all the way through the process, because I, I work for the YMCA, not the contractor, and I have to make sure my client gets the best product that they pay for.
Let me ask a question this way, so you're doing that on behalf of the Y, but you're not doing it on behalf of the town?
No, I'm not.
And there's, lies the difference.
Yeah, I mean, we've required it on a lot.
The other part of the issue too, is that for the property next door, you do have a peer engineer who's overseeing that project as well, and, you know, where there will be some changes made to that mutual lot line, including the berm, et cetera, that's going to have some impact on stormwater, et cetera, and so, you know, everybody wants to make sure that this works, you don't wanna have anybody's, like, next-door neighbor's basements have an issue, or somebody's backyard, or whatever else it is, and...
We wanna be sure to be sure, I don't think it's too much to ask.
I don't think it's too much to ask, now that I understand how the process worked from their perspective. I, I don't want them to incur additional expense, but I think the town has to be... I don't want them to incur additional expense, but I think the town has to be protected.
Well, can we limit the scope?
We can do this.
Or the spend to less than $15,000?
I mean, if they're going to do all that work, all you've got to do is review.
Well, I. When you limit the scope to 15,000, I have no clue what a peer engineer would do for 15,000. Maybe it's 5,000. I don't know what that means and how flexible can we be with regard to that? So, that they're not over, in other words, they're going to put money in that account. When does that money go into that account? At what point? When construction starts?
So, it would be as part of a contract. So, whoever the peer is, what we've done in other developments is the peer is normally part of the process prior to digging taking place, right? So that they're familiar with what's proposed and they're overseeing, you know, the development.
They're essentially our eyes.
Yeah.
And they are their eyes and mine.
So, my question on this, because I haven't had any projects where this has been required, mainly because I don't do 40B projects where this has typically come up. And I see the, I've seen this come up in the scope of 40Bs, but again, I don't handle them. But my understanding is that that's usually when it's been a peer view, a peer engineer who's been involved in review of the plans throughout the process. Whereas our engineering department did not refer it out for peer review. In terms of the engineering review, the stormwater review, they did refer out, and we addressed those questions. I've just never seen this requirement in a non-40B.
Well, this is particularly, you know, I mean, this is a one-of-a-kind.
I don't, yeah, I don't.
We've allowed you quite a bit of latitude here. And for us not to monitor this process, because with that latitude comes the responsibility and the likelihood that something could happen. And I mean, an extra set of eyes would make us comfortable, and we're not talking about a lot of that.
No, Ms. Viner, I'm not, I'm not objecting. I'm trying to.
Here's where you are.
I'm trying to understand, because I've not, I've not had this come up before, so.
This is, this is a one-off.
May I ask?
Go ahead.
Do you have a standard scope when you send out a request or proposal, something like this?
So, it would typically be stormwater and drainage. That's the primary interest. And obviously, you know, if you're going to accept potentially that their engineer is certifying that structures that, you know, are belonging in a certain location, that they're complying with that. I guess part of what I'm wondering about here, too, is that, you know, there's going to be some changes at that mutual shared lot line. And we want to make sure it works out properly for everybody. And having somebody oversee that could alleviate a future problem for either side so that things are done right at the beginning.
And the bus stop thing, too.
Can I ask? What have the costs been for these?
Like Sandwich Road.
Yeah, Sandwich Road. What did that cost?
So, I don't know what the development cost is going to be.
No, I mean, our peer engineer.
Yeah, I don't recall exactly. That was.
They paid.
But it was like 10,000.
It was like 10,000 or 12,000 dollars, wasn't it?
I thought it was.
You're talking about, I mean, for us to ask for 15,000, I mean, on a 20 million dollar project, doesn't.
I have no problem with that. I was just trying to make sure everyone understood the scope of work that would be involved for that 15,000.
I think, I think would be. I think that we should have.
So, it would be funded 53G account, 15,000 for the purpose of.
Peer review.
Peer review for.
I'd make that motion.
Stormwater. You know, we've typically had them review ASBILs as well. I mean, you know, you could choose to do that or not. I would say, and perhaps I missed it, I didn't notice that there were plans that were dimensioned. So, you know, that would be something that we would need to have submitted. For, you know, for the dimensions of the building itself. I think they do have offsets, et cetera. But I didn't notice any set of plans that had actual footprint dimensions for the building. So, you know, those types of details would need to be added in. But I think, you know, if you want to limit the scope to stormwater management, right, to make sure that the drainage they've planned is going to work, and that particularly if there's changes at that mutually shared lot line, that it's working properly for both, right?
And ASBILs.
I don't want to prolong this, Madam Chair, but I want to understand what is it that we're trying to make sure we're protecting the town?
Long pond.
No, no, and I get, that's why I'm bringing this up. So, in other words, their engineer is doing a lot of work, but their engineer is doing it for the YMCA. Do we need to have a peer engineer review any of that? Or is it okay just to limit this to stormwater and drainage?
I think that makes sense.
Okay.
You know, and I think, you know, when you're talking about issues relating to lighting, you know, that's clearly something that's going to come up as time goes by, right? You're going to know at night, what are you seeing or not? And they can certainly put in full cutoff fixtures toward Josiah Path so that light is not shedding that way. But, you know, obviously, when you have a parking lot, you want people to feel safe. And, you know, maybe there's.
Why wouldn't we include that in our engineer review, too? Because it's a point of contention between the butters. The butters, and, I mean, it just seems simple. It seems a no-brainer to me.
And, you know, they may have a circumstance where lights at a certain time of night when they close are greatly reduced so that, you know, there's, I mean, the intent of that wildlife corridor is that wildlife can use the corridor, right? And so, they're accustomed to walking around in the pitch black because that's what they've always had.
Treason of berm are going to affect wildlife in any fashion.
And, you know, but yet, I'm sure they're going to want to have some lighting there for security purposes, et cetera, and that makes sense.
Madam Chair. I think that we have to condition it. I didn't, I don't admit with all the documents in this application, I don't remember seeing a lighting plan, but I suspect there is one.
We actually showed it during the.
Did you show it here?
Yeah.
Short memory.
Sorry.
But, so, that should be reviewed. We want to minimize light trespass on the adjacent property. I'm not sure how you do that. So, dark sky compliant and limited light trespass. But I think that that should be included in the scope of work? Or do we leave that to the building commissioner's office?
You know, I think when they have the direction, they've stated that they're going to do dark sky compliant lighting. And I'm sure that they're going to make all efforts to make sure that particularly on that side of the parking lot, that there's not spill toward the residential development. Because, you know, that's obviously the interest here. Because, you know, we do condition those residential developments to not have spotlights shining in their backyards off their property.
Right.
And similarly, to be a good neighbor, you don't want to have lighting from the Y shining into their homes or backyards either.
But if we are not specifically attempting to eliminate light trespass, then who knows what will end up there? I think that.
Go ahead.
I just think that if they're going to do all their due diligence and all their engineering, it's going to make our peer engineer's job minimal.
Yeah.
And I think for us not to require it would be, I mean, because Long Pond's in the balance. His project's in the balance. What, he got 24 houses over there? I mean, it's just for the want of, 10 or 15,000 dollars, I just.
I think we condition it with the applicant funded 53G account.
Up to 15,000. I'd make that motion right now. Well, let's go through.
We have conditions.
We have conditions.
Propose we make that a condition?
The first condition.
The first condition.
Part of the second part.
So, we're all in agreement on that?
Yep.
Right? Did we finish findings? Back to findings. We went off the path, not Josiah's path.
So, there was a conversation that did arise about the sidewalk. And when Josiah.
Sidewalk on Brick Hill?
When Josiah Path was proposed, what we asked of them was that they have a sidewalk across their street frontage and to connect to the church.
Yep.
There was not a requirement that they take the sidewalk across the church property, et cetera. That's not their work. So, I think last time I was by, they had certainly appears that they've put in the sidewalk that was, that we required of them. And that if, you know, there's some effect to that sidewalk through the construction, because they will be obviously putting in a second driveway there, et cetera. You know, that sidewalk repair and upgrade or whatever will become the Y's.
Part of the curb cut.
The Y's issue to deal with. Because, like I said, we, the ask of Josiah Path was just that they connect to what's existing. And if there's, you know, an impact to that, that's not on them.
No, we'd of course repair, I mean, it's going to be part of the road, the curb cut.
Right, so, right.
But of course, have to make sure that the entrances from the sidewalk down to the driveway are appropriate. And it wouldn't be able to get away with it any, you know, anyhow.
All right, I think we're on to conditions, on to Cincinnati, as you'd say.
Yes.
So, I guess the other thing is, so we have talked about improvements to safe crossing at the intersection there. Is that something that the town is engaging in, or who's?
I think that's part of the Cape Cod Commission decision. So, we'll obviously have to engage with the town and the DPW in terms of coordinating that. But I think if you made reference to the other approvals, that would probably incorporate those conditions into your decision.
Cape Cod Commission.
Yeah.
Okay.
Is there, is there any need to consider a completion date? We see in this town right now, many of these bigger projects go on for years and years and years without ever. And we have put completion dates on. We never did that?
20 months from September, so that would be.
You could make a finding that the anticipated completion.
No, I mean, I would expect in the building permits that are issued now, direct contractors to continue expeditiously. And that if you don't continue work on your project, you can lose your permit. So, I don't anticipate that's going to be a problem here, and you can't mandate a completion date.
Like Attorney Claude would just said, the applicant did indicate 20 months.
20 months, which would be May 2027.
You could include that as a finding.
Right, as a finding.
You could say that's what their intent is. But you can't mandate that somebody finish, but.
I agree.
And if they have issues with materials or whatever.
Fourth majeure.
All these things happen.
Yeah, all of that.
So, that's, you know, some of it.
Now, we just have some things that have, I can't talk, I can't mention the addresses. It just seemed to go on forever and ever, even though a part of that project has a completion date specific to a building in the conditions.
Yeah. No, we obviously wouldn't want it as a condition just because life happens. But in terms of findings, I think we'd be perfectly comfortable with you including a finding that applicant's testimony is anticipated completion date is 20 months.
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
No, I think that's a good idea, though, just to put it in.
Now, just also correct, it's 10 bike spaces versus 10 racks, correct?
Oh, I wrote racks. I did say racks.
Yeah.
Spaces, there's five racks with a space on either side.
So, to provide essentially for 10 bikes. And if there's many more.
You could probably, you could probably put more than that, is my guess, but yes, there'll be.
All right, do we?
She's still looking.
Oh, you're still doing conditions, right?
All right, so you have a rear portion, 1.23 acres, that you're protecting. It's going to be undisturbed, connects to the town land, correct?
But for potential walking paths.
Yeah. So, all right, so it's going to be an effort with the town to look at the intersection it deferred and what types of safety mitigation can be employed there?
Madam Chair.
Are you doing conditions?
No, no, we dare do that. Do we, as a board, have the right to recall the applicant coming before us when there are, when we deem that there are unresolved matters of concern? That exists in a current condition, a very large project. But I'm wondering if that's something that, given the size of the project, if we found something or somebody reported something, because I know that our building commissioner is the zoning enforcement agent. But we have conditions that maybe need, if there's an issue, should come back before the board to be discussed as to why something is not what it should be. Is that something that we should incorporate into a large project? We wouldn't do that with a house necessarily, but with a large project like this, on a main thoroughfare?
Well, you know, there's that option, but you don't want to necessarily interrupt the zoning enforcement action that would take place if there's a problem, right?
Why wouldn't we dare do that?
So, that being said, I mean, perhaps you would like to invite the applicant to come back in maybe a year from now and update, you know, how things are going. What's the progress?
I would want.
As opposed to, you know.
I would want to be, I would hope this board would, if there were really a major issue, compel the applicant to come back and explain themselves as to what that issue is.
Right. Well, I think, you know, if there are administrative changes that need to take place, and clearly, there's going to be a conversation about the buffer between the two properties, then there will probably be some changes that are made on either side there to work out what's best. And they can certainly come back before the board and give you an update.
That's not what I'm saying. So, we reserve the right, in other words, we reserve the right to call the applicant back to explain an outstanding issue that has not been resolved. In other words, you might have an butter, not a zoning issue. You might have a butter who's concerned with an unresolved issue. I'm only posing it because I'd like to be in the condition, if it's not appropriate, let's not do it.
How about, I mean, they're looking at a 20-month construction window. I mean, they're going to start in September.
12 months.
How about if we ask 12 months, just an update? If it takes Kevin five minutes, great.
Well, I think his concern is that if something goes wrong in six months, yeah, I think he.
We have a very complex process enforcement in this town that doesn't always favor butters. And I'm just trying to find a way to, on a project of this complexity, to be able to call the applicant back, to simply ask questions to try and resolve concerns.
So, I think what I would propose to the board is that we request the name and number of a contact person for the project. And that that person would be our go-to person so that if we do receive a complaint, we have somebody on the Y team to contact and ask them to address it.
We do, or the zoning office?
Well, yeah, if you, right, if you folks have a concern, would come to our office, we would reach out to the person and, you know, they're not.
I'm not very hard to find.
He'll be at the pool.
I mean, just. I'm there more often than not.
For everyone's edification and the public, I mean, we don't do projects this size on a regular basis. I mean, and never. And, you know, it's just incumbent on us to see that things don't get out of control. We're just trying to ensure that that's the case.
I have zero objection to giving a status update. And, you know, I have some concerns over what you've outlined, Mr. Petrucci, because I think as this board has talked about, you're not an enforcement board. But we don't want there to be a problem. We never wanted to get to the point where we're getting called in to answer those questions. So, I've always advocated open lines of dialogue, whether it's with my office or with Rick, who's going to be the project manager on this, the owner's project manager, or with Stacy herself. I'm perfectly open to, whether it's a condition or not, there being open lines of dialogue about this project. And if there's an issue, we deal with it.
And I appreciate that. However, unfortunately, there are, is a very large project that, that does not work well, has not worked well, and has required unusual attention by various town officials, which doesn't always get the job done. I'm simply looking for an opportunity to resolve something that might be a problem. And I do appreciate, I know you would come back if we asked you to. I would like that to be conditioned, that we could recall the applicant.
Well, again, here's the other part of the problem, is if there's something happening, like, you know. like, you know, Brick Hill, you know, there's complaints that the road has, you know, a lot of dirt from the site, right? Back and forth. So it's really much more efficient for, if we have complaints or concerns that come in, that we're able to reach out to the.
Call the guy.
The project manager and say, hey, look, we have these problems, please resolve it. Because by the time you set up a meeting with the zoning board and they come in, hopefully if it's that big of a problem, it's already been dealt with, right?
As long as you can resolve it, that's fine.
Yeah.
I think the phone number with the general.
I think the condition that we provide a contact, I think the condition we provide a contact person.
Yeah.
Designate a contact person.
I think that's fine.
No, I think Mr. Clower coming in at 50% completion or something might be, you know, rational.
And I mean, in conjunction with a peer engineer who's going to sniff out these problems, so to speak, because, I mean, the building department is extremely busy.
Yeah.
And I mean, we can't, and this is a very large project, we can't expect them to be in there even weekly. I mean, it's just, it's too much. And I'm sure that, you know, I think we're heading down the right track with the peer engineer and some kind of contact.
I think the contact will solve.
So those are the first two conditions since we talked about them? Are you clear?
Yes.
Clear with those?
Crystal.
Okay.
All right, all of the conditions. Work hours, you'll, regulars. We can't really say per plan because those are going to change.
Well, those would have to be modified through, through the board, though. So I think you probably can say.
I can say per plan and, yeah. All boards, Cape Cod Commission.
I do want to point out, when you say all boards, the building department made a suggestion, it wasn't.
A recommendation?
It was a recommendation, but it's not one we can accommodate because of the design of the leaching field. They wanted us to add, potentially add excess parking at the rear back here, but that's not something we can do because of the design of that septic system.
And that's the only item?
That's the only thing we can't do.
Well, we could condition that all high school traffic parks at the high school.
I think you got to go back to this, Mr. Clower is talking about, because I know what he's asking.
So I just, when we say all boards, you know, we're happy to comply with the requirements, but that was a recommendation, not a requirement.
Well, that's a department, what he wanted was you to put that leaching field in earlier. It's something that you're saying you can't do, so we can't say all departments.
Yeah.
Or we can say all departments excluding, we can't say excluding the building about them.
Excluding that one item.
Excluding the parking.
Excluding the referral. I mean, excluding the referral, we still have to get a building permit, obviously.
Excluding the recommendation about extra parking. We can do that.
I mean, I think, you know, we're all hoping this is going to be enormously successful and that if parking should be a problem in the future, you know, there will have to be some arrangement made. So for example, if, you know, there's a busload of school kids coming from another community, maybe what happens here is the bus pulls in, drops the kids off, and goes next door and parks at the high school, right?
Well, we could condition that parking at the high school, all high school-related traffic should use the parking at the high school whenever possible, anyway, I mean.
Right.
I think those things work themselves out.
It's going to be very hard to police individual vehicles.
I prefer not to have that as a condition, but I think that if we had.
Well, it's easier to do it now than come back in and deal with it, or, you know. I mean, if they got in the habit, that would be the habit. I mean, there is sufficient, I mean.
I think that's part of, part of.
Activity to the, to the high school.
Part of our.
You already are short. How many spaces, 40?
Twenty.
Although there's actually high school parking for the field there that's actually in like pretty close proximity.
Oh, yeah.
So I would kind of anticipate that that would naturally become a potential overflow location.
Yeah, but.
I see buses at the corner now.
I see buses all on Brick Hill.
I don't think we need to condition that. I think.
No on-street parking.
Yeah, but.
There's no on-street parking.
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, that's, yeah.
No on-street parking.
Okay. Dark sky lighting, condition. I don't, do we need to do any police? I don't think so.
They got enough room there, anyway.
Do you have to what?
Any police detail condition? I.
The majority.
I think if necessary for road opening.
Yeah. I think, you know, it'll be either that or, you know, if there's some portion of the construction that you've got materials coming and you need a detail, right?
When necessary.
When necessary, we can do it that way, that's a good idea.
Yeah, I mean, they're not going to run anything but a clean operation, I'm considering.
Think of anything else.
Construction is construction.
Well, I mean, it's.
Anything else?
What else you have, Noreen, in the laundry list?
Well, of course, there's all those little things like posting the address when it's done, street opening permit, you know, they like.
All submissions short of Kevin's objection.
They can add to bike parking if, if that comes up in the future. Let's see.
All construction vehicles remain on site.
Yeah.
You've got the 53G account up at 6,000.
So, right, we all, so, you know, as part of, right, what that stormwater engineer would do is, you know, they've talked about the necessity, our town engineering, that they don't want any stormwater discharging actually into Brick Hill itself. So, you know, that'll be something that is part of their development plan. They can oversee and the peer can look at.
Going to be an issue, anyway.
There was a question about monitoring for phosphorus for Long Pond. I don't know. I guess the question is, you know, when you have monitoring, how do you determine what the source is? That's going to be the difficulty.
Well, that's what I asked for when I asked for the down gradient monitoring wells for. That's specifically why I was asking about it. And you have to establish through an engineer what the grades are. You set a baseline during testing, initial testing, and anything above that's theirs, they own it. So.
That's why I didn't think we'd close tonight.
Yeah, of course we are.
Of course we are.
No, I.
Done.
I thought.
We're adding, we're adding conditions.
Issues that we would leave with, but.
No, this is a great project, we can.
Oh, yeah, there's no doubt about it.
I'd like to see them get going. So with regard, Madam Chair.
Are you adding a monitor? Is that what you're trying to do?
I'm trying to understand something, and I apologize, but there is a, there is a concern about phosphorus monitoring as it regards our drinking water across the way. If that concern exists, then how do we test for it? How do we protect against it? And the only way you can do that is somebody's got to monitor it. And the only way you monitor it, unless the, someone tells me differently, is you've got to put monitoring wells in, set a baseline, someone that has to monitor it from time to time, maybe forever. And anything that goes above that original baseline then belongs to them, then there has to be remediation. How is that handled? So it gets complicated, but let's start with, if we, if we have to monitor for phosphorus, well, then you need monitoring wells.
Yeah, I guess it would be helpful potentially to have something from the water super.
Yeah, that's what I was just thinking.
As to what specifically is needed.
Maybe we could have the peer review person meet with the water superintendent and figure out what's the best way to approach that.
So I'd come back to my statement that, you know, any approval here is not a blanket approval.
What?
Any approval that this board issues is not a blanket approval. We still have to go through, you know, if there's a peer review involved, if we still have to go through the building permit process, we still have to go through curb cut process, we still have to work with the water department in terms of the hooking up. There will be multiple levels of additional scrutiny.
There's no multiple, there's no level of review for phosphorus that's going to come along with any of the things you mentioned.
He could meet with Amy Lowell.
That's why I was, I guess I didn't think it all the way through, but I thought there were going to be questions that.
Well, why don't we just condition it that the project will not increase phosphorus level beyond current level readings? Then they got to figure that out. Reconstruction readings, and then they have to figure it out. I don't know.
Yeah, I don't know where the existing wells are. You would think that the town has existing wells that have that benchmark, but I don't know where they are, so.
I have no idea.
I'm only guessing that they do, I don't.
We're only concerned what they create.
Yeah.
And, and if the town has wells off-site, that's one thing. So I'll have to set a baseline. If we condition it that they do not contribute to the addition of phosphorus levels coming from their site, then they have to figure out how to monitor that.
Well, I don't see how we could do anything if we want to close tonight, which we already have, other than what you proposed.
Well, that's why I'm proposing that, so we can close.
And then I'll see what, how it shakes out. I mean, I have, I do have a reasonable amount of faith that these people are going to do it absolutely.
I mean, we did do this in one night, and it's a major, it's one of the most major projects outside of the other big project.
Okay, we blogged out on this, or we have it done, I guess.
Do you agree or disagree?
Well, so you have a residential development next door, and that's not completed yet.
That's going to change the levels right there.
So how are you going to slice where something's specifically coming from?
It's in the, it's in there.
So I think that this will also be wrapped up into the peer review of the stormwater discharge.
That's what I think.
Yeah.
Another reason to have a peer review. Yeah.
So exclude that as scope of work.
So we have to add phosphorus analysis to the peer review, scope of work. Okay.
Well, I know where that's going to go.
I don't know how else to end it.
Well, I think the peer can work with the town's stormwater engineer and the work that they did so that they can align.
It can be done, absolutely.
All right.
Yep.
Except there's no technology.
How's the rest of your list?
You watch what they do.
Next.
What's the rest of your list?
Oh, I think we've covered, I think, most everything that's on here.
And you've got a 53G on there?
Yeah.
Up to 15,000.
Well, I don't know how you specify the.
Well, that's what I was asking, what the scope of work would be.
I mean, I guess, so it's usually done the reverse, where you ask a peer to do work for you, and they provide you with a scope and they give you an estimate. So I guess what we.
Well, they use the initial deposit of.
Well, we could just make, if it goes over, they're responsible.
Well, no, you can't just randomly spend money and more money and more money, right? So you would, you could cap a contract at, say, a max of 15 at this point in time, and that if they anticipated it was going to go over, they'd have to come back and explain that.
Well, perfect.
But they can't, but they can't spend additional funds.
Let's do it that way.
That's good.
I mean, I'm, I mean, I think Sandwich was like 12 or something, wasn't it?
I think it was around, yeah.
It's a good project, it's going to be run well, we just need some eyes on it.
You don't mean to do this, we're just doing our job.
We understand, it's the, it's the due diligence aspect of this, and, you know, none of this is taken as a slight on the project, we fully understand.
So we're all set with conditions, you think?
I think we have all kinds of.
Your list is good.
List.
My list is good. Tony's list, we're in good shape? Guys all set to vote?
I am.
All set to vote?
Also vote.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
None.
Great. Sorry we had to put you through that, we're just doing our job. Thank you. Thank you all, we're, we're very excited about this project.
Yes, great project. Good job.
Half hour quick, we'll get a much larger applause.
Okay, next item.
All right. Let's clear up our stuff here.
Minutes?
Are we doing any minutes, Noreen?
We are deferring to our next meeting.
Okay.
All right.
So we have.
Administrative approval.
County road. So I have my paperwork somewhere. Here it is. I'm going to stick this in here. Do you want to put your, are you taking your plans?
It's only been a year, right?
Good evening, Madam Chair. Do you need to read this in or anything? I don't do a ton of the administratives.
What?
Do you need to read anything in, or can we just?
I don't, I didn't plan on reading anything in.
So we're requesting a minor modification to the special permit that was issued for this project. One of the conditions specifically said that there's to be no, that the condensers would not be located in the front yard. And part of that was concern from the neighbors about elevated condensers. So originally, as proposed, they had been looking at.
Sup on the roof, wasn't it?
Well, that's what the decision said, where the decision allowed for something on the roof. But when they were proposing this, you'll see here, they were elevating the condensers. And part of that was they thought they had to for flood zone compliance. And in, during the hearing, it was decided that the condensers would be relocated probably to this area here. However, as they've moved through the construction process, the building commissioners informed them that the condensers do not need to be elevated because the whole structure's not coming into compliance. And because it's not all coming into compliance, the, the new condensers can be located at grade. So what I submitted was a request to remove that condition prohibiting the condensers from the front yard, as well as a letter of support from the neighborhood who initially objected to it. Because now what they're going to do is locate the condensers at grade right here, and they provided us with some very simple renderings that show them flush against the house there. And we think that's a better location. And the neighbor here is the one who had.
Issues.
Was going to have the condenser on, on the side of the house next to them, they're much happier with them located in the front yard. So we were just asking to modify that condition prohibiting the location of the condensers.
Is there going to be screening? Is that, is that a little white fence thing?
No, I mean, right now, it's just, it's just condensers that's shown there. They, they're going to landscape it and screen it. This is just shown as, as the location. But, no, they have every intention of landscaping and screening that.
Now, don't those encroach further onto the street than if they were around the.
So there.
Where we had conditioned them in the first place.
It's located right here, it's not encroaching into the street.
No, but it's closer to the street, is what I'm saying.
So.
The original structure that.
Yeah, it is, but I think that we've typically not looked at condensers as part of structures for setbacks.
They're on a pad.
They're on a concrete pad, absolutely. But I, I've not known the board to prohibit their location in a situation like that, especially when the.
The board oftentimes doesn't allow any further encroachment when your setback isn't.
Understood.
I know, I was comfortable with the original condition, to be honest with you, up and out of the way and.
The neighbor here is the one who didn't, who was, who was actually really in favor of us putting them here. And they're the ones that would be impacted by the location of the.
Why would they be impacted by them on the, located on the roof?
Because.
About the sound, remember?
Because they're, because they're, they're, they're very close to the property line themselves. So that's the only request.
Could you go back to the rendering?
Yeah.
So that parking area is kind of tight, but that's not what we're talking about. Okay.
I understand it.
Yeah. Okay. I'd make a motion.
I think it's not supposed to be a real parking spot, though.
No, it's actually shown here as proposed gravel storage area.
Didn't you say trash was going there? Didn't you say trash was going there?
Yeah, I mean, that's, again, this is just, this is just a rendering, an artist's rendering.
Cars back there, and you know it.
There will be cars back there.
Okay, so I can make a motion to allow the modification of the previously approved plans? Is that the correct language that?
Sounds good.
So just to update further, what happened was they removed the proposed condenser that was going to be elevated in front of the house, and we issued administrative approval to put it in the side on the roof. So this will be on top of that, which is.
An admin on the admin.
Yeah, putting it back where.
Well, I'm okay with putting it back on the ground.
Okay, so are you, I guess the other question I had was, it looked with the depth of the pad and the depth of the gravel strip, that there really wasn't space between the two to actually do landscaping?
I think there's enough space there, and they could always move the gravel rock, they could always move those gravel barriers if need be, because they are going to be landscaping there as part of what they've discussed with the neighbor.
For many, many years, the Sollivans who own that house just had a picket, not picket, but a stockade fence there with rose bushes on it. It's a very tight situation. I don't know what else they're going to do other than put it around the left side.
About the back of the house.
Which that's up against the beach.
Yeah, you don't want it in the beach. That's really, other than that roof thing that we picked, that's the only spot, really.
Yeah, I wonder if it was the abutter across the street the other way who didn't want to see something in the front yard.
No, this neighbor, this neighbor didn't want it in the front yard.
Yeah, I don't want it in the front yard either.
Right, you.
I'd lose the vote.
He made the motion, it's, the motion, okay.
Yeah.
I'll second it. Any further discussion on the motion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? None?
Yes.
Mark.
Oh, you opposed? Oh, okay. Four of one. Right, Nick?
I'll take that.
Aye.
Four to five, make me a Hall of Fame baseball player.
You're already buying a lottery ticket tonight, anyway.
Can't have it all, Kevin.
Very much, this is, I wasn't kidding.
Perhaps we're one of the nicest boards in town.
You know what, right now, you get my vote. I wasn't kidding when I talked about this project, this is.
Oh, Lord.
This is the, this YMCA project is the thing that I think I will, at the end of my career, look back on and say, I'm happy I got to be a part of that.
And your kids might still like you.
Yeah, probably not.
Maybe.
Nice legacy, all right.
Zoning administrator updates.
I think you've heard enough.
Yeah, we've heard quite enough board discussion. I was going to pick a date, but since two members are missing, we need to have another meeting coming up before summer, so we'll do that next meeting, we'll pick a day, okay?
It's been April and October, and we should have had one.
We should have already picked, but I was going to pick tonight, but then absent